All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our May 16th meeting, the month of May meeting for the Amherst School Board. We're going to do things a little bit out of order tonight at the beginning of this meeting. First off, we are going to open a public hearing and the public hearing is in relation to RSA 198 20 dash B. The school board is hosting the public hearing to discuss the acceptance and expenditure of unanticipated federal and food service grants. So we are getting this started tonight at six o'clock. With that, I will take a motion to open the public hearing so we can get this process started tonight.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Jason. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
I'm just going along. Whoever says seconds, getting a second tonight. So I believe we had John Balgett and Shannon Gascoigne on that today. If you'd like to mark that down. Before we do a vote, I do want to make a notice that Victoria Parisi is joining us remotely tonight. So we will bring Victoria up. Victoria, before I'll give you the first vote to go into the public hearing. If you can do the roll call vote for me, but first confirm that you are by yourself tonight, or at least alone in the room where you are. And that it was impractical for you to be here tonight.
Yep, I am alone and it was impractical for me to be there.
Okay, any discussion on opening the public hearing? Seeing none, Victoria, if you'd like to start the roll call, that would be swell.
Parisi, yes.
White, yes.
Gascoigne, yes.
Gothier, yes. Terry, I'll have you grab your mic there just to turn it on. Now you criticized everybody last night on the SAU meeting. Nobody talks into the microphone.
That I understood the importance of it.
I'm just kidding. So we are officially in the public hearing tonight. And so to kick this off, I will turn it over to our interim superintendent, Steve Chamberlain.
I appreciate, thank you to the board. And what, when we have a public hearing about the acceptance and expenditure of funds. This is really a board's exercise in full transparency. In communicating with the community about what we receive and how we expend and, and, and the timing and things like that. So I appreciate Amy's, all her work. This is our third public hearing. So everything is triplicate in our fun little world. There is a comprehensive memo to support this work. And Amy, this completes now the trifecta of the work. Just thank you for all the effort. And I know this community, among most communities, it really does value transparency and wants to know what we receive and what we do. So Amy, thanks. I'll turn it over to you.
So yes, as Steve said, you have a memo and a grid in your board packet. Just to explain school budgeting, we operate on a gross budget basis, which means that we are not allowed to spend a penny more than what was budgeted. Unless we accept those revenues and if we accept those revenues and we can expend those revenues. So they're added to both the revenue side and the expenditure side, which increases the budget and what we're able to spend. So for the FY 23 budget, there was 313,000 that was allotted to special revenue, which is grants. The remainder of our 31, 819, 908 budget was to the general fund and the food service fund. So throughout the year, the board has received an additional almost 16,000 in local grants and donations. And those are presented in your consent agenda at regular meetings. And those funds increased the special, special revenue budget to 328, 935. So throughout this fiscal year, we've also been allocated additional federal and state grants in excess of what was anticipated at budget time. There are also some prior year grants that have not been fully expended and those just roll on to the next year. So we want to be able to take advantage of those funds and, and able to, and be able to expend them in FY 23 if needed. So just a couple of things that were different this year. We received a food service supply chain grant in May of 22. And that was deferred to FY 23 and that is for milk and produce. Those funds have been just about all expended this year. We also will be receiv- or have received a second allocation or will receive a second allocation of a little over 37,000 as well. So if you want to take a look at the grid, it lists all of the grants that we are looking for the board to approve the, the delta from what was approved in 23 and the actual. So you can see the IDEA and preschool, that's special services. We, we received additional money than what was anticipated. There's also some prior year grants from FY 21 and 22 that have not been fully expended. And going down the list, you can, I won't go through all of them, but you can, you can see the differences from what was approved versus what was actual. So just a little bit on the prior year grants. What we do is we expend the oldest year first. So we would draw down on 21, then move to 22 and then move to 23. So our director of student services manages the IDA and preschool. Christine manages the, the title one, two A, four A. Yep. And then we've talked about the, the Esser funds. We are just about, we're getting close to being fully expended on those. So one other thing I just wanted to note on these grants. It's important to realize that federal grants are not allowed to supplant budgeted costs. So we're not able to just take these funds and apply them to the budget and reduce the budget. We are only allowed to supplement activities within the budget. The one exception to that was the SR three grant where we were actually able to, to use those funds for items that we might have budgeted. You also see the safe grants in here that we received. And those are for access control. So we have some access control that software and other entryways that are being updated. As well as some visitor recognition software that we are putting. Spoke about the supply chain grant, the lead mitigation, mitigation grant. We actually have a, an agenda item later on in the, on the agenda. So I can speak more to that, but basically this is a prior year expenditure that wasn't closed out and we are now receiving funds for that. So I'll take any questions, but at the end we'll be looking for the board motion to accept and expend the funds.
And we have to do that after we exit the public hearing as part of the regular board agenda. So before we get to that point, any questions from anybody on the board regarding these?
Well, thank you for addressing the safe grants. That was one of the grants I had a question about. And I just also had a question about the, the process. Is this, is this a new process? Will we see some of these again next year? Because you said some of them are rolling, so. So this is a new process and it's not something that has been done by the business office in the past. But as Steve mentioned, and you know, in trying to have full transparency of all of the funds that we received. We wanted to have a public hearing for the board. We're playing some catch up. We'd like to try to do these earlier when we find out about the funds and have the board accept them. So we are going back and playing catch up. But yes, the, the motion that we'll be looking for is to spend up to a certain amount. We may not spend all of that. So whatever we don't spend, you will see in a next public hearing. Because we'll have to accept those funds for FY 24. So this is just to be able to expand in FY 23 up to, up to the amount. So yes.
Could you give us an, oh, can I ask another question? Could you give us an example of a grant that we wouldn't, that we would have a grant and we wouldn't spend it? Like, why wouldn't we spend a grant? I'm just curious.
So we would spend it, but we, we, some grants are two-year grants. So we might want to hold on to the, to those funds for a little bit longer. Maybe to do a larger program and be able to consolidate all, all of the funds. The special ed, special student services are also based on need. So sometimes we aren't, we don't need to use all of those funds, but we are able to roll them forward. So.
Thank you.
Jason, Terry, any questions for you guys?
So just because I'm a little confused, maybe because I'm tired.
No, that's okay.
So I'm assuming some of these grants have stipulations, you know, we're gonna, in theory, well, in a few moments, they're a vote on whether or not we even approve to accept and expend these funds. I'm assuming up to, right, but I'm assuming some of them, like some of these grants, we can only expend them on certain things. So you've talked a little bit about that, but what are some of the things that we might be able to use this money for?
Yeah, so they're, they're all very directed grants. Yeah. So entitled to ways professional development, teacher collaboration work there. Title one, it's extra help. It's an equity grant, try to support equity. Title four is easily transferable, but there's a number of buckets, including wellness and activities like that. So this is a follow-up to the assurances that we sign the program assurance is actually the general assurances are going to come back to you. Because we have to do, the board's got to sign that one, but not the, so yeah, it's very much prescribed. We are very, Christine, Amy and Katie are very tight about following the guidelines. The DOE, the New Hampshire ED actually is very supportive. They send them back and they help us go through it. But yes, they have very strict guidelines about what we can use them.
Yeah, I just want to make it so it's clear not only for us, but for, for everybody. Thank you. You know, right, we, we're gonna accept these funds and I don't want somebody, you know, when we talk about facilities to think like, well, you just accepted $673,000. Why don't you use that for A and E fees?
Right, yeah, exactly. And we're, and we're also not allowed to supplant regular budget items, but yes. And these are federal funds, but they're administered through the New Hampshire Department of Education. And it's, as Steve said, it's very strict as far as the activities that are approved. There's a very comprehensive reporting program that we have to follow. We do monthly reporting on where we are as far as activities, approvals, budgeted funds, spent funds, received funds. So it's, it's pretty extensive. So yes.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I will take a motion to close the public hearing. It's, yes, or anybody from the, I guess a public hearing would require that, yes. Anybody from the public wish to make any comments on the acceptance of these funds? If you'd like to make a comment online, you can raise your virtual hand, type your name in the avatar, turn on your camera. And you'll have three minutes to speak if you'd like to make a comment on the funds as well. In person and on Zoom going once, twice, and we just lost somebody. So I think that's a no. All right. So we will close, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing now. There we go from Jason. I have a second from Victoria, excuse me, from Shannon. Looking at Victoria's name on the screen. So Victoria, I will start with you with a roll call vote.
Parisi, yes.
White, yes.
Gascoigne, yes.
Gothier, yes.
Beam, yes.
And so we are officially out of the public hearing at 6:13 tonight, Danae. I will now open up our regularly scheduled business meeting at 6:13. And our first order of business tonight will be to take a vote to accept the funds on the pub that we just discussed in the public hearing. Amy, can you refresh my memory in the amounts?
It's right here. I got it.
So under RSA 198 20B, the motion is to accept and expend up to 673,645 dollars from federal and food service grants. And in the packet of notes for today's meeting, which is on the website, you can go through and see the table listed on page five. That lists FY 23 projected grants, the actual amount for FY 23. And then the amount that we are approving to expend here tonight are up to that amount again of 673, 645. So with that, I'll take a motion as just stated.
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Jason. Can I get a second? All right. Shannon will second. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote, starting again with Victoria.
Parisi, yes.
White, yes.
Gascoigne, yes.
Gothier, yes.
Beam, yes.
Okay. So I pass these unanimously five to nothing. Amy, thank you for all the work on that. I know that those grants are very particular about how they have to be funded and applied. So I appreciate your diligence. Christine, obviously you're, you're working with that as well. So I appreciate the work of the administration to get all those ready for us. And more grant money, we can have the better thing. Just find 50 million lying under, lying under a grant somewhere for a school building project would be doing great. All right. So next item on our agenda is going to be a recognition of a couple of student groups tonight. So first up, we'll, we'll call up our spelling bee champion. We'll have that young man coming up to the microphone here. He wants to come with his parents as well. They're more than willing to come on up. So as he sits down, Ohm, I'm going to have you turn on the microphone there right in front of you. If you hit that button in the front. He's got it, Jason. You do better than most adults with it. So that's a, that's a good thing. So Ohm finished, it was the school champion at Amherst Middle School and then finished second in the state of New Hampshire in the state spelling bee. So so first congratulations on what was the most difficult word you had? Besides the one that knocked you out, obviously. That's, that's a bit of an unfair question.
The word that I got off on, that was probably the most difficult word and it was jerkin.
How do you spell that?
The proper spelling was J E R K I N. I spelled the E with an I instead.
Gotcha. Okay. Anybody on the board have any questions for Ohm? Any comments, Shannon?
Yeah. Well, first of all, congratulations, Ohm. That's such an accomplishment and thank you so much for being here. I think it's, the spelling bee is really such a great program and it's one that it's optional, right? Like you had the choice to do this. So I'm just curious if you're comfortable sharing what, what is it about the spelling bee or spelling in general or words that, that really kind of drew you to this competition? Because it takes a lot of work to get where you have arrived.
First, I want to say thank you and second, I'll say that for the spelling bee at first, I didn't think that I was going to be that, like that successful with it. But like, as I started learning more words, I realized that I was able to remember them. And so then I fell into the passion of spelling bee.
Thank you for sharing.
Have you won another school level competition before?
In fourth grade.
I see yeses in the crowd behind you, so.
Yeah, I was, I won the spelling bee in fourth grade, but sadly due to COVID, it was canceled.
Gotcha. So is anybody in your family good at spelling or do you have to correct everything they write?
Sometimes, yeah.
Yeah, that's fair. Happens in every family. Well, Ohm, we appreciate you coming down. You're in seventh grade, correct? So eighth grade next year, you excited?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, good luck. Thank you for coming down and congratulations again on the, on the second place finishing the spelling bee. All right. So now I will call up our two youngsters that represented New Hampshire, I should say will represent New Hampshire. And I think it's regional actually as well in the invention convention. That's the nationwide invention convention at the Henry Ford Museum or Museum of Innovation, excuse me, coming up in early June. I looked at those dates, those might conflicted the last couple of days at school and they have to talk about that. So along with their invention instructor, if you will, Gail Polio, who runs the invention convention at Clark Wilkins. We have Violet and Olivia, and I will turn it over to you two youngsters to explain, actually before I do that. You won the invention convention at Amherst Clark Wilkins, then you go on to win the states, correct? And then it was a regional competition and you won the regional competition. And now you're going to nationals in early June. Do I have that summarized accurately?
Yes.
So so why don't you tell us about your invention? Make sure you get it fairly close to the microphone to speak into it.
Do we actually have our invention? Do you want us to show?
You can show us, you can share anything you want to do. Cut us in on patent rights later down the road. That's fine.
Of the squishy stuff. Nope, I'm sorry, search this one. Yep, okay. So basically what the squishy stopper is meant to do is first off, you can stick it on to really any school supplies, like pencils, markers, glue sticks. Yeah. And it's supposed to be universal. It can also be used as a fidget. It's customizable and they're collectible. And yeah.
And what's the purpose of the squishy stopper?
It's to help pencils and pens and markers from not rolling away. And yeah. And they're also fun, fun to play with. So like, if you have ADHD like I do, like it helps me focus better in school. When I like play with them, I sometimes put them on my pencils in school. So yeah.
So where'd you get the idea? Aside from constantly picking stuff up off the floor.
Yeah, my mom is a teacher at our school and she always, she works with a little student. And whenever his pencils fall on the floor, he gets very frustrated and he always asks my mom to pick them up. And she's just like, I've had enough of this. You need to invent something to fix that. So we did.
Yeah, mom.
Oh, mom.
Yeah, go mom.
Any, any questions from the board? Shannon? Oh, Terry, sorry, Terry.
All right. Um, this is one of my favorite things every year. One of the fun parts about being on the board, there is an awful lot that's not fun, but getting to judge. Invention convention is fun. How did you enjoy working together? Because I know that it could be a little hard as a team to share ideas and give each other space. How did that go?
Well, it's been really fun because like we sort of team, we teamed up and like decided the materials that we were going to use. And we also were, we like had a bunch of meetings all the time to like decorate the squishy stoppers and make it more better and stuff like that.
Who designed the T-shirts? Cause they're pretty great.
My aunt. Yeah, T-shirt line or looks like a clothing line. It's called, it's, yeah, it's by her empire. So we asked her if she could make us T-shirts and she did. So yeah.
Nice. So Shannon, do you have a question?
It's, this is genius. This is such a good idea. I'm with your mom. It's really annoying when you have to bend over multiple times to, to pick something up. So kudos to you guys for, for bringing it to life. I feel, this feels a little sharp. Have you ever seen the show Shark Tank? And it's like, it's like
Yes, yeah.
Shirts and your whole setup. So, so congratulations. I hope you guys have a great time in Michigan. And just know that like your community is so, so happy for you and we're, and we're cheering, cheering you on from here. So good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Well, good luck, good luck in Michigan. Anything else you want to add?
Not really. I mean, actually, sort of, yeah. It, it is good for like people with disabilities, like if you're in a wheelchair and your pencil falls on the ground. Then it's going to be like really hard to pick it up. So if, if you have a squishy stopper on your pencil, they won't roll away.
There we go.
Great job.
Good job, girls. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, yeah. We have a backing too. Oh yes, we have the back of our shirts.
So the back of their shirts say, nothing is impossible because I'm unstoppable. Do they have an international convention, convention?
Well, it's called Worlds that I believe is the last one.
Okay.
And then I have no idea.
Oh, so the Worlds is in Michigan. Got you. Excuse me, I misspoke earlier. Got you.
But I have no idea.
Well, good luck.
Well, good job. Good luck.
And thanks for coming. For the families, thanks for coming.
All right. So we'll move on to our final item that's a bit, not out of order, but a bit different than what we normally do here in the, in the meetings. And we have our full contingent of the members of the Amherst Education Association negotiating team. From basically what started almost a year ago to the day, probably we started in last June. We had some conversations and laid out some ground rules and some submission focuses to be able to come up with a contract for teachers. That was going to pass on voting day. If you remember last year, 13, 14 months ago now, the contract we had come to agreement with the AEA on a four-year deal did not pass. So we went back to the drawing table, started to work again in August in earnest. And I think we had to have close to 15 or 20 meetings over the course of the, the four-month window between that. And then it was right before Christmas, the Wednesday or Thursday before Christmas. We finally came to a deal. It was a lot of work and had a lot of good productive conversation. So tonight we just get a chance to do what we didn't get a chance to do last year. And that's to actually be able to, to sign the contracts and be able to celebrate getting this agreement in place. Not only thanking the taxpayers for their votes, but as a representative of the board negotiating committee, I want to thank the AEA because it was tense at times. There was a lot of work, a lot of ground that we covered, but I think in the end, I think both sides come away very happy. And I think that both sides did a great job of, of being able to be flexible and finding, you know, meeting some of the needs of, of the other party. So I want to just take a minute to thank the entire group that's here tonight. And then we'll sign the contracts and we can get those officially in place so that teachers can start getting paychecks when we hit the new fiscal year in, in July. So we can, we can head on over to the, to the table. Amy, did you want to say anything at all, representing? Okay. She's, she's good.
Thanks for everything.
So how do we want to do this? All right. So we, we have to sign both documents over there. So we'll have our board, all four of us can go over there and we have to sign. Victoria, you will be able to sign at the administrative office. Steve will have the golden copies. So you can sign at some point when you head on down to the SAU building. And so I do want to thank Josh Conklin as well, because Josh was part of the committee that got this done as well. Would you like to sign first, Amy? You want us to sign first? Okay.
I thought it was my last name, but I don't have one signature, so.
So for everybody's reference, this is a three-year deal this time. And so we'll ideally be back at it again in a couple of years and be able to continue to extend it. And not have to worry about any more years without, without contracts. Of course, now I see it, Steve, you can actually see the table in the camera there. If you are watching at home, what you can't see is off to the side, just off to the left of the screen. We do have folks signing the two contracts that are there. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Yeah, thank you. All right. So as Steve picks those up, we'll move right along tonight. We do have a packed agenda. So we want to keep things moving along. So I'll open up the floor in person and then for attendees that are online. For, we'll open it up first in person though, so Steve can get things set up on the computer for anybody online. But we will open it up for public comment. If you'd like to say anything, address the board tonight for anything regarding public comment, please come to the microphone here in person. You'll have three minutes, say your name and your town of residence. If you'd like to comment online, you can raise your virtual hand, follow the instructions in the chat, raise a virtual hand, enter the full name in the avatar. Turn on your camera, say your name and town of residence, and then you'll have three minutes there as well. Any public comment here? Seeing none, I see none online as well. So we'll go to move on to our next item tonight. We'll go through our consent agenda. I will take a motion to accept the consent agenda as it's presented in the agenda tonight. Items one through nine, as you can see on the screen at home or here in the, the building.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Jason.
I'll second.
I have a second from Shannon. Are there any discussion points on the consent agenda before we pass this tonight? If you have questions on it, we can do that, but I, I think it's, the curriculum was pretty, was laid out pretty well. I don't know if, if we need to have a presentation on it, but the thought was we could just address any questions that you might've had for Christine. And there is, we have items five, four through seven, the social studies curriculum for grades five through eight at the middle school. Uh, yeah, there Victoria, I'll let you go first. You have your hand up.
Yep. I just had a couple of things that I wanted to mention about the different reports for the schools. Do you want me to start with number one with Clark Wilkins?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine, okay. Um, so I just wanted to comment on um the summer reading website. I loved seeing that. Um, it's something that we've been talking about for a while, supporting literacy and the connection between our town library and our school um library. So that was fantastic to see, um, as well as the art show uh participation as a group for K and one was wonderful. Um, I personally love seeing as many students be involved in these shows as, as possible. Um, and for students to see themselves as artists at, at young grades, but at all of our grades, you know, pre-K through eight. Um, and then there was, oh, there was a, a PD flyer that was included. Um, and I just wanted to, to compliment the person who created the flyer because the description of what the teachers will walk away from, from that PD session really shows a productive use of time. And I appreciate that um opportunity for our, our teachers to learn from our teachers.
Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Any questions from the folks here in person? Shannon?
Um, not as much of a question as a comment. I just wanted to congratulate um Mrs. Gothier on a very well-executed um fourth grade transition night. Lots of positive feedback in the community. I also had the pleasure of, of attending with my fourth grader and it was just really positive. But what I really walked away from um was how articulate our fifth graders are and how uh well-prepared the eighth grade National Junior Honor Society um students touring the building. So that was neat to see those students sort of like coming into that ownership of that process. And um so just kudos to you, kudos to all involved. Um, I also wanted to just take a quick minute. This is not exactly in the consent agenda, but as a new board member, I had the um opportunity to attend manifest training with the staff in the business office. Um, and I think that's a new program that you're, that you've put in place and it was just really beneficial. And um I appreciated learning more about the process that um the business office uses um for, for cutting payroll and, and all the things that you do. So that was really helpful. So thank you. I know that took some time and preparation for you and your staff. Um, so thank you for that. And um congratulations again to Dr. Murphy um on, on your recent accomplishment there.
Yeah.
It is, it is.
I know firsthand.
Yeah, thank you.
It is a big deal. We, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Terry?
Well, yes. Okay, so I have a few. My first is actually directly to my left. I would like to hear a little bit about um your legislative, legislative committee session. Ah, I cannot speak tonight, committee session.
Yeah. I would be happy to share a little bit about that. Um, so I had the opportunity, um, I'm a member of the Board of the New Hampshire Association of School Principals. Um, so it's a volunteer opportunity for me to work with other principals across the state. Um, and I was invited to join um a legislative committee session focused on a work group around teacher retention in the state of New Hampshire. So they had stakeholders attend, um, they had the Principals Association attend with a few of us as representatives. Um, superintendents from throughout the state, um, north country, um, seacoast area. They had representatives from the uh Special Ed Administration Association and they'll have multiple sessions. Um, you know, as they're trying to dig in at the legislative level about retention of teachers in New Hampshire. So they're exploring things like our salary compared to other states. Um, opportunities for loan forgiveness for teachers and how New Hampshire compares with um that of other states and kind of what is the current sense of um, you know, the, the climate in schools and how are we recruiting and retaining teachers? Um, it was really, it was a great uh session. Many of the state representatives um and state senators that were involved. Um, Ruth Ward was leading this work. Um, we're really engaged, asking great questions of us. Um, and uh it was a, a great experience for me too. So um always a great opportunity when I can advocate for the fields um and also learn from others. Some pretty exciting things going on uh throughout the state up in Littleton. They're doing a full teacher residency right now, trying to get teachers um to come up there and, and work in special education. You know, kind of even a beefed up model of some of the things we've explored um here in our districts. And I know we'll be talking about um as a community too. Um, but just exciting stuff and, and a great chance for me to um help talk about the, the need in the field.
Terry, can I just ask a follow-up to that question?
Please.
And we, I know, for example, Florida just, uh, they passed as part of their legislative session, some two-hundred-and-fifty million for attracting and retaining teachers. Does our state have anything on a statewide level that's obviously not approaching two-hundred-and-fifty million? But any, any legislative ideas to be able to assist with this? Because it can't just be a local district by district effort.
Yeah. I think right now it really is a local district um effort in New Hampshire. And this uh, this committee is uh charged with investigating that and figuring out if there's something that the state should do differently to help better support the local school districts in doing this. Um, so you know, they're partnering with higher education. There was a representative from the New Hampshire Department of Education as a member of the committee too. Um, so uh hopefully they, they are able to gain a lot of perspective and, you know, help support things moving forward.
Terry?
Yeah, thank you so much for being just a really great representative for us and, and a voice for what we have going on. And I think that um is something that we've been trying to get more involved with as well, with our legislature across the board. I know that I was recently speaking about mental health initiatives going on nationally and in one of our state representatives as part of that on a national level. And so thank you for that engagement. I think it's important and thank you for reporting back to us. And I know you're just a great representative in general, a great advocate for that. Um, okay, and next to middle school, ecology school. How did it go? Tell me more. This is such a great part of our program.
Yeah, so we're not done yet. Uh, the second half of our crew is up this week.
Okay.
Uh, along with uh students from Mount Vernon as well. Last week, they had a phenomenal week. The weather was perfect. Uh, I heard nothing but, but great stories from both the students and the staff who attended last week. And uh this week is so far so good. Uh, so, so it's, it's been a great experience and I think many students who were a little bit nervous about going got over it pretty quickly once they realized, you know, how good the food was and how comfortable the sleeping arrangements were. Um, it's a little different than my, my uh days of camping on a mountain uh with eighth graders in my previous life. Um, but that was uh, everything's going really well so far. So uh I'm excited. I'm going to be, actually be attending the Teacher Institute this summer. Uh, I'm a former science teacher, so for me, that's really exciting. And it'll also give me um a good glimpse into uh what the, you know, curriculum and activities look like for our students so that we can, you know, move forward and, and uh make sure that that aligns with our curriculum.
Well, that's awesome. Thank you. And um my second AMS question is about the school beautification. Yeah. And I'm thrilled to see pictures and, and how is that um? I'm appreciating the fact that we had challenges this year with, with them really feeling ownership and pride in their school. And there was vandalism and there were things that we're not necessarily used to seeing.
Yep.
And so how has this been going? Have they really? I know that those who were working on the murals and that are obviously engaged, but across the board, has it really, you think, turned the corner for kids respecting their space more and feeling that ownership?
So I'm going to knock on wood, but I, again, uh, but I'm going to say that uh we have not had any significant issues of vandalism uh recently. Um, since a lot of, a lot of the work, proactive work we did with um our launchpads and uh with our um having individual student and parent conversations and um that, those types of things that we did. Um, what I did find is with the bathroom beautification contest, sometimes some of the people who submitted artwork were not necessarily the people who wanted to do the work. And I sort of took that for granted that you're, you're submitting something, you get a chance to do it. Um, but we had other kids who didn't necessarily win or submit who were interested in doing the work. So what's really nice, we have a group, uh, Brandy Pettis, one of our amazing art teachers, has been working with uh a group on Wednesdays to do this Nature Calls bathroom, which is the, the under the sea. Um, and they've been trying to keep it as simple as possible. Um, but at the same time, it's, it's been really interesting and it looks nice in there. And they're working on adding some other things, some LED lights, some light covers that are blue, make it look a little bit more oceanic. Um, but we're, we're trying to work with what we have. Uh, the next step that we're trying to complete either, you know, probably it will back up right to the end of this year is the second floor, um, the sports bathroom, uh, the, the, I forget what I called it. Uh, but we're working on the old locker room lavatory. We're working on the locker room lavatory uh with sports theme. We have big Fathead stickers for all the Boston sports teams, uh, New England sports teams. And um the students who had uh that in mind really wanted some like primary colors, some navy blue and some, some red and, and some big, big colored walls. So um I don't know if there's a correlation or, you know, a connection between the work we're doing, but I do. Um, we're seeing less vandalism and I'm seeing more beautification happen and I like both of those things. Um, so it, it's kind of exciting to me. I'm, I'm also really excited about the big mural uh that's going up starting next week from Ryan O'Rourke um along with input from students about what makes the best day ever at AMS. So I'm excited to see that come to fruition as well.
I, I really applaud you for having um student voice and choice and, and just feeling like they're leaving their mark in a positive way.
Yep.
And they get to feel proud of that, you know? When they come back and they go to events or they, their younger siblings come up and they're like, ah, I helped, you know, do that. And so I, I'm, I've been so excited to see this and, and to see the stages. So thank you for sharing with us and for, for being a great leader on this. And um for both schools, I want to thank the PTA for teacher appreciation and for just our parents who really stepped up and made our staff feel amazing and appreciated. And the pictures and the feedback that I heard was just incredible. I know that it happens every year, but um I felt like this year was kind of above and beyond, man. Those were like overflowing.
The snack bar.
Yes.
Snack bar was like one of a kind. It fed us for days. So we were thankful.
And so, yeah, I wanted to um to definitely make mention of that. And I have one more, but I can take a turn later and let Jason speak. I just.
Shannon, you all set?
I was just gonna, Terry said PTA and it reminded me that I have as the liaison to the PTA connected with them. I don't have any major updates, but I did want to um share that they are supporting the fourth grade Fawn farewell at Wilkins and the eighth grade graduation activities. Um, so if board members wanted to take a look at any of their signups for supporting any of those, I would certainly be happy to forward those on. And they have their general meeting right now, tonight.
Yeah.
Terry?
All right, so those were all my happy ones. Um, so here is my challenging question about curriculum. Um, social studies. I have no questions in general for how you face it, what you're doing. You're very good at what you do. My question is more around how are we supporting our teachers around the additional laws that have come from our state over what they can and cannot discuss?
Uh, so it's a great question and it actually ties in with one of um the bigger changes with the curriculum. In seventh grade, we've actually added a Holocaust and genocide unit. Um, that law was actually um passed a little over, or just about a year ago. And that law was actually to help protect teachers so that they could teach about the Holocaust and genocide and that they were not, they were, they were feeling that they had the support from the state in order to do that. Um, so that um law really, it requires us before the end of eighth grade, so one time at the middle school for us to be um teaching Holocaust and genocide is very specific. So we placed that in seventh grade because it fit really well. Um, the seventh grade teachers worked hard. Um, that law came through. We found out about it um actually at our superintendent's conference last year in June and learned more about it. Um, and we were starting to get the information as to exactly what we needed to include in it. It was, you know, July, August, while we had those details and our teachers, seventh grade teachers just, you know, worked really hard to make sure that they created that unit uh for students for this year. I was able to um be in the classroom for some of our big events. We had a speaker come in to speak with students and we had a culminating activity. So that was really nice. Um, so the teachers, actually seventh grade teachers are feeling comfortable and feeling supported with the guidance um a, around that, the Holocaust and genocide law. Um, eighth grade, it's still a little tricky. They do um US history and they're uh sometimes a little worried and, and um feel that they do need support. Um, anytime they have questions or wonders about how they should approach something or how they should handle something, uh, they were going or uh especially around the Bill of Rights when they were doing that, there were a lot of questions came up. And I met with them fairly routinely. Anytime they wanted to meet, I met and we talked through, how do you approach this? Um, how, how, you know, how should they answer uh if this question comes up? Or um, you know, they would even ask, um, you know, if we're looking at current events, what would be a current event that's appropriate for eighth grade? That would be, you know, comfortable and tolerable and that we're not dipping our toes in an area we shouldn't be. So just a lot of conversations has been really the best way to tackle that. Um, I know uh even on in-service day, fifth and sixth grade um met uh with Kristen and with, and even our fourth grade joined along. Um, and Anna was able to join that. So it's really truly ongoing conversations and them reaching out if they have questions. We did a lot of professional development um when though that law first came out. Um, and I think our teachers understand it and feel comfortable. It's just in the moment, they sometimes need to talk through what are, you know, how do I approach this? Or what should I say if a student says this?
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know, Steve, do you have anything else to add? No, okay.
Seeing no further questions, I will take a vote to approve the consent agenda as presented tonight, uh, starting with Victoria with a roll call vote, please.
Perici, yes?
White, yes.
Gascoigne, yes?
Gothier, yes.
Beem, yes.
And it passes five to nothing unanimously. Onto our next item tonight. It's a, an insert item. We, we always add it in there, but our superintendent reports, uh, everybody has the board notes that Steve provided uh with the full laundry list, full two pages of items on the uh, three pages? Oh, it is three pages.
Credit where it's due, man.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fair. Uh, three pages tonight of notes. So Steve, I'll let you hit on the high points and then we can open up for any questions that anybody has on items that you may not address directly uh in your part.
So just wanted to bring a couple of things to the, to the board's attention. Um, the board had mentioned to get some feedback from the planning board. Um, so I did add the, there's four, there's not insignificant planning boards in this one. Um, but I did meet with a developer um this week who's got a, a signi, is in the stage of a significant development. And it's, I met with them um in the fall and the spring and, you know, it's a follow-up to the school district meeting, what happened with the facility project, all that fun stuff. Um, but what's interesting um was that they're trying to figure, one of the questions is, you know, how many kids would we expect from a big development, like a sixty-person development? And there's, there, um, Founder's Way is a, and I have all these stats. Let's say it's a fifty-home um development with twenty-five built and twelve under construction, something like that. And currently it's point four-three, I didn't put this in, I apologize. But Founder's Way has point four-three students per home. So for every about two and a half, oh, about every two homes, you get about one youngster. Um, so that, so with a sixty-person development right now in, in Amherst, you're looking at, you know, about thirty kids, which is just interesting. And the all, you know, formally, it could have been two-point-one per home, you know what I mean? So um, and the, um, one of the, the demographic that he's seeing is um people are moving in Amherst without kids, which is interesting. Um, you know, in a, in a thirty development with, with only about a half a kid per, there's like fifteen homes without any kids there. And I think um some people have known this, so I've sold homes to people without kids. So it's just an interesting thing. So I'll continue when I get questions from the planning board or where Mike does, we'll send them to him, just so you know what's going on. Those obviously weren't big. Uh, I love the alternative dwelling unit. I think you talked to me about that, when you put a apartment above a garage. I love that term. It's classy term for apartment above a garage, like Fonzie lived in. Anybody know Fonzie? Right, he had an apartment above the garage. The other piece um I wanted to bring to your attention, and this is something that I am chagrin that I didn't bring it to. Amy and I have talked about for a long time since really we joined NSDAQ, is taking a look at and working through the NSDAQ Trends Report in Special Education. It's a, it's a free service. We talked about during the budget process and we met as a leadership team and it's a perfect time to get trends report as um for a very public, we are transitioning um, right? Meg is transitioning from the Director of Student Services. It's all announced, except she'll be retiring next year. So it gives a basis of where we are. Um, we're going to work on this with all, all districts. Um, but we get trends in a number of FTE personnel. We will monitor special ed teachers as well as support staff, trends in added district, um, things like that. Now, there's some, um, there's also a, a trend in um like a, a collaboration like an ARSEC, I don't know how many kids are going in ARSEC. Um, and also just pure funding uh over the last five or six years. It's a big data collection. We give them all the data, they get it back and we'll look at it. Well, certainly when we get it back, it'll be presented to the Amherst School Board. Um, this has been on our to-do list to bring it here. I apologize it didn't come, but we're on it and we'll look at it. It'll, it's a good summer project, to be honest, if they take a look at the trends report. And so we'll keep the board up to date on that. So the only things I wanted to add, the two things, we're hanging out in the planning board a little bit and let you know that NSDAQ is in process. Cool beans?
Yeah.
Quite a few other items that are on the uh, the list of board notes for Steve, we'll be discussing later on. So any, any off-the-cuff items that anybody would like to address with Steve? Okay. All right, so now we'll go on to our, our next segment of the agenda tonight. So we were, we've been talking about this for a few months now. Uh, I know there's been a lot of work done uh with Shannon Gascoigne and Victoria Perici leading the way with a wide member, wide group of uh community members to come up with a plan to fix the roof in the HVAC units at Amherst Middle School. So Shannon, if it's all right with you, I will turn the mic over to you and let you uh moderate us through this with a presentation that you can see on the screen tonight.
I need a squishy stopper.
I need a squishy stopper for my water bottle. Okay, great. Sorry for that little interruption there. Uh, thank you, Tom. So in the Amherst School District, post-election survey that happened in 2022, so not the survey that we have open now, but the one. That the board conducted last year, the highest ranked priority was quote fixing the leaking roofs. Which the district administration, Building and Grounds Committee and School Board determined, we're really making our schools watertight. Specifically AMS. So in response, the SAU, Amherst School Board and Building and Grounds Committee have been working. Towards a phase approach to address the roof at AMS along with the HVAC system. And we have Mr. John Bockett, who's part of our Amherst Building and Grounds Committee with us tonight. So thank you, Mr. Bockett. As a reminder, the unit ventilator leaks that led to the displacement and disruption of students at the beginning of this school year. And last spring are, many of those units are original to our building, which we broke ground on at AMS 50 years ago. So we have been in consultation with Energy and Energy Efficient Investments, which is a firm based in New Hampshire. We have with us tonight, Mr. Matt Smith and his colleague. I'd like to invite you up to, to the, to the podium there and feel free to grab another chair. We've been working, they work with many school districts across the state to accomplish projects similar. To the ones that we're looking at in the most energy efficient and fiscally prudent way possible. The Amherst Building and Grounds Committee met several times with EEI and SAU leadership, including our Director of Facilities. To discuss phasing and cost options. At the request and recommendation of the committee and board representatives on the committee, EEI is here with us tonight to present their findings. And suggested phasing options to the full board for our consideration. So it is my pleasure to welcome you both. Thank you for being here with us this evening. And the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Again, Matt Smith with Energy Efficient Investments. This is Chris Clariti with HTS, one of our mechanical. Contractors that we use regularly. We have gone through, if you want to go to the next slide. So a little bit about Energy Efficient Investments. We're based out of Merrimack, New Hampshire. We do have offices throughout New England, one in Massachusetts, one in Maine, one in Vermont also. But we're a turnkey ESCO. So our main focus is energy savings and we specialize K through 12. That's been our primary focus since, since our inception. Next slide. So we came into Amherst Middle School and. What we found was most of the equipment was right at end of life. Okay? You're, you're going to get 25, maybe 30 years and, and you're right there with everything. So we started working with some engineers on best practices and how to install new system throughout the building. If we can go to the next one. One of the things that we found was. You have mostly unit ventilators through the building. They tie into the window system. This gives us a pretty good option to update the windows while we're updating those unit ventilators. They're older, they're tough to handle, open, close. And then you have that huge vent, unit ventilator right in front of it. It's not comfortable to lean over. The next slide actually shows from the interior. So again, you have this large unit ventilator sitting there in front of it. These are not ideal. They're prone to overfreezing. They're not easy to work on. You're not getting good. You, you, you.
What's that?
Not good ventilation. They're, they're noisy, they're clunky. And the filtration system on them just isn't up to par and up to the standards that we're used to at this time. Moving forward through the school, you also have some other units that are within the learning space. They're up higher, but they're still creating noise issues, learning issues. You can see this particular one right here has a sprinkler head hanging way down underneath it, creating obstacles within the classroom. So what we'd like to do is take and remove all of these interior systems and put them up onto the roof. And if you show the next slide. This would be a typical rooftop unit. You're going to get better life out of it. Because we're running the ductwork, it's, it's a fully ducted system. And because of that, we're going to have to take down the ceilings and the lights. So in return, you're going to end up getting all new drop ceilings, all new LED light fixtures. Again, with the better filtration, much better getting up to MRF 13 for these systems. Better control. So we would install DDC controls throughout all of these. So you can start monitoring when these units are running, when they're shutting off, setting, you know, setting. Specific schedules, if you have weekend things going on or whatnot. All of that can be pre-done through the BMS and the front-end system. With the controls, you're, you're, it's a huge, huge energy savings with not having these systems running constantly. Well, yes. Well, yeah, it's an, it's an online portal. And actually if Chris wants to talk to the, about the BMS, that's.
The rooftops?
Yeah.
So typically what most of the schools have been going with is an energy recovery unit, which has an enthalpy wheel. So basically what that means is that any outdoor air brings in, okay. Okay, uh, this one here is a Valant, which is partnered with Green Heck about five years ago. Manchester Schools just decided, they kicked the tires on quite a few. They decided to go with these ones. Meaning it's been vetted by some local districts, but we're more than happy to show you some if you're not familiar with them. Yeah, yeah, Carrier's been around for a long time. They aren't very much in the ERV market that I see.
Thanks for your questions, John. I think we're, we're still kind of at the, the high level, but some of those details we definitely need to, to get to, but thank you.
Yeah, so again, lower noise. You no longer have the disruption in the classroom of equipment. Next to the students, we're getting it up on the roof. And then better serviceability of the, of the units themselves. So obviously a lot of discussion has been around the roofs, right? That's what brought all of this up. So we went through and took note of some of your major concerns, middle of the road concerns and lesser concerns. So up here, base bid C1, C2, D and H. So when we went through with the architect, we ended up labeling this C1, C2, D and H. These are kind of your high priority areas that are leaking and caught, you know. Reeking some serious havoc on the schools, if you will. Two alternates, alternate one was down here, which is roof K. And then alternate number two was up here, roof I. Those were added in as additional, if, if the project allowed, the funding allowed, we can move into. Getting some of those because they're getting, they may not be causing issues right now, but they're getting to the point where they're going to be a headache pretty soon. So. Moving into the next slide.
Oh, I just, can we go back to that one, Matt, real quick? I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that everybody understands where we're oriented with, with this in, in our building. H is over the stage, is that?
That's correct. So this would be about the main entrance area right here. And yes, H sits over the, um, the stage.
Thank you.
So we went through and did a breakdown of roofing, structural steel, mechanical equipment, install LED and electrical needs. Window replacement contingencies. And then there were some add alternate items. The roofing, the way it was originally designed, went with a extra protective layer of coverboard. And if it was decided wasn't needed, it could be a credit back. One of the things that came up were walking paths to the equipment on the roof and being able to get around safely. And then another thing that came to our attention, Roger brought to our attention, there are some existing Romex, which is. Typically what you're going to find in a residential setting. It's not really meant for. Commercial applications, right? So. There's, in the code, it gets a, a, a little crazy as to whether or not you can keep it because it's being used. But ultimately, the ideal situation would be to get rid of all of it. And go with MC or BC, which is a metal shielded cable instead of a. Yeah, Romex, I don't, it's, I, I don't even know what the sheathing is exactly, to be honest with you. It's like a vinyl, yeah. Easy to tear, easy to rip. Not what you want in a, you know, metal and brick building. So. We had the base bid again, the add alternates. And then the remaining of the building that didn't fall into one of those three categories. And then, you know, a combined. So one of the things with past bonds being a little tricky, we brought up a lease option. Lease is nice because you only need the simple majority instead of a 60% majority. It can be written into the budget and it's like a mortgage where if interest rates move, we can refinance. Right? So it has a couple of different options. So just laying out on a yearly basis, six percent's about the average right now. On a 20-year, we went through for just the base bid, 452, 760 on an annual basis. If you were to add in the two alternates, it pushes up to 745, 296, entire project, 1.33. So.
I'm very familiar with leasing equipment.
Yep.
We've done that, I've done that before. I haven't leased a roof.
Is it essentially just a payment plan? Is that really the only?
Yes, um, there are some specifics and, and unfortunately Mike wasn't able to make it here tonight. He's kind of the guru when it gets into bonding and leasing. And laying out the difference, but, um, yes, essentially it's a payment plan that, again, the. Getting the lease approved has some different stipulations. And then on the backside, you know, if Amherst decided to get up and walk away, it doesn't get passed on to the next person. If you were to go with Bedford or one of the outlying schools and decide you didn't want this, uh, school anymore. It, it, the payment stopped there. It's not, it, it's not transferable, like a bond would stay with the taxpayers. So.
And I can address it in the future, but. So essentially, when you work with a, a leasing bank, whether it's roof or equipment, they treat it the same.
Yeah.
Cause I've never seen that before. We paid off roofs, but we leased all the HVAC and all that work. But I, so I just had never seen the roof as part of a leasing program, but it's just for the finance company, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Didn't know that, so I.
Palom just recently did it and Timberland just passed one. And I live in Litchfield. They just passed their.
Roof plus. Roof W, all the energy, all that stuff, all the same.
Yep.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it and I hope that's, I just thank you for that because that's, that's a nuance for me and my experience because we did a multi-million. I've, I've been a part of multi-energy savings where we, we rebated on the payment. So it's good stuff. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
So just so I'm, I'm aware.
Absolutely.
So I'm assuming that the base was, uh, the base up there and then the alternates were C1, C2 and D, correct?
No, if, if you go back, the, uh, the base was C1, C2, D and H.
Okay.
Yep. So the base was these three here and then the smaller one.
Okay, and then so K and, uh, was it I?
K and I.
Okay.
Would be, yes, the add alternates.
Yeah, thank you.
The full.
Yeah, six, just under 16 million.
Just under 16 million.
Okay.
Yeah.
Most of those, um, letters, sections of roof are like original to the building. Like if you look, that's in the original.
Sure. No, that's why I just want to make sure I was following what the, the bases were.
And, and just to, just to make it clear, when we built those numbers out. It's everything that falls underneath that roof. So all the ceilings that fall under it, all the ductwork that supplies it, all the lighting. And that's how we had the best, it was the easiest way to break it up. So when you look at those line items, that's. It's everything that falls under that particular roof.
And it, and it's the roof itself too. It's the whole, the entire project.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
I saw it was on there, yeah.
Yep. Well, we haven't dove into the scheduling and the phasing. As deep as we had been vetting out and getting pricing put together. So at this point, I think it'd be a little premature to get, go down that road. But if it's, you know, if there's something that gains some traction, we can definitely start coming up with some different options. So. We have a lot of schools throughout the, uh, throughout the state that only allow us to come in the summertime. We call them summer slammers. It's, you know, middle of June, we're in, end of August, we're out. Uh, we do what we can in that timeframe. We're starting to find that with some of these bigger projects, the schools are allowing us to phase through the school. So whether it means taking some swing space like a gym, turning into classroom area. Or bringing in some temporary classrooms and being able to section off part, you know, portions of the school. That's starting to work and we're starting to do that in a few places. I, I have two projects going this year in Nashville. Where they're actually doing that and, and they're bouncing throughout the school and phasing it. So it can be a year long. And, and get it all done in one fell swoop instead of mobilizing on multiple, multiple summers.
Do you mind going through the rest of the slides? And because we have, if, if this, we can consolidate all the questions at the end?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it'd be perfect. Just because I have a couple too, but I want to make sure that we can at least get through everything. So if you explain some of it, we can, uh, I can cross them off.
So this summer, I think the idea, and Chris was nice enough to show that I put below where it's actually above. So. Of course he couldn't catch it before I sent it out. But, um, what we were looking to get done this year was just that small roof area over the stage. That's, um, causing a lot of issues and is a, is a major leak concern. It's a nice, smaller project with no HVAC to really get involved with. It would just be, uh, the roofing, um, a little demolition and possible abatement through the ceiling area. New lighting fixtures and new, uh, ceiling. And again, those electrical fixes, that's the, uh. If we happen to find the Romex in that particular area, we would, uh, we, we built in a little bit of allowance, uh, to upgrade that. So this is really kind of the focus for this year. And again. This right now is built into your base budget price. But when you get this one out of the way, it could possibly drop that one down. So. Now we're looking underneath that, you know, million mark. Sorry. It's okay? So again, Mike wasn't here, but, uh. Any questions or concerns for Chris and I?
Yeah, so with the, you mentioned it's on the stage, it's the roof over the stage. I've sat in that cafeteria, probably 50, 60 feet from the stage. And even right next to buckets collecting rainwater. So when you say stage, is it that entire roof?
It's.
Is it? So it's not the cafeteria roof, which I believe has issues too? Am I, am I mistaken or are they, or are they all?
That cafeteria is kind of in this area here.
So that's not in scope at all at this point? We haven't looked at that?
We haven't, no.
So the leaks that we see in these trashcans in the cafeteria, are they coming from the stage and running down girders and pipes?
That is one horseshoe of when you have leaks coming from roofs, right?
Well, they can run, yeah.
Trying to find where it's coming from and chasing those leaks.
Okay.
Is, um, is sometimes half the battle, really. So what we're finding is because of the design and the, the, um, they've got some parapet walls and some different angles there. What we're finding is this is probably the major part of that concern and where you're getting those leaks from.
So, okay.
To the, to the best of our ability at this point, getting into it.
Okay.
It will be something substantive. If we replace that, we will see a difference in that school with that little roof.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, yeah, no, you're not going to see a difference in C2 with replacing that roof. But I mean, in, in that building, my, my concern is the cafeteria because we use that a lot for. Public gatherings. We just had the spelling bee there that we were talking about. So that's one where I think the eyesore. You know, visually it's, it's, that's where the public sees. So that makes it a little bit worse in my mind. I think my mic's on. Um, alright, perfect. So in terms of, uh, Victoria, you have a question as well? I think my mic's on, um, alright, perfect, so in terms of, uh, Victoria, you have a question as well, I'll let, I'll let Victoria go.
Thanks, Tom, um, I, I understand and agree with you about what you're talking about with the cafeteria. Um, but I just want to highlight that the C one, C two, and D are those areas of the student hallway. Where, um, they have like the large trashcans catching the tiles regularly. Um, and kind of blocking space and, and making that an issue for the, um, you know, more of an issue for the students. To be able to get around than what we have in the, um, in the cafeteria. Um, the other thing that I was wondering if, um, someone from EEI can just touch upon is the difference in, um. Kind of like the air filtration of what we currently have versus what, um, we would see in these rooftop ventilators. I know you mentioned a MERV rating, and I just wondered if you could discuss that a little bit.
Yeah, I can talk to that, um, so basically, the unit vent that's like behind us, behind you guys now. Has typically what's called a MERV eight or less, and it's a one inch filter. Uh, it's not the type sometimes you see in your home where you can actually see through it, it's usually thicker than that. Uh, but that's the best MERV rating you can get. Uh, when COVID became a thing, one of their biggest recommendations was air filtration. They recommended a thirteen or fourteen, um, these, a fourteen, I think is a four inch filter. So it's mu- it's much deeper, and then in front of that is a MERV eight, a two inch MERV eight. So what happens is you, you clean your MERV eight, your, your big hole filter more often. Saving the more expensive filter and letting it run for the longer periods. Um, these units are also ERVs, so they bring in a lot more outdoor air than these units can. And, uh, by recovering the energy of that, they're able to do it even more cost effectively.
Thank you.
Shannon?
Yeah, great, thanks, um, thank you for that, so I just, Tom, to your point about this particular section and. Why we're talking about that for this summer, so part of the committee's work and recommendation was, um. Uh, asking EEI, you know, what can we, how can we phase this, and what can we get done now, like realistically? So there was a walkthrough with, um, our, um, inspector here in town. Um, there's some structural steel components that would make other sections of the roof harder to get to quickly, but we wanted to. Be able to bring something to the board that we could kind of get the ball rolling on and make, um, have an impact at the school. And so that was part of why, um, H, which is a, a, a issue at, at the building was kind of selected. Um, and if anyone else who is in those meetings wants to add.
No, I, I, and don't, um, don't misread my intentions with that question, it's not of a matter of, it's, it's, are we doing enough at this point? I totally get H, I just don't see the cafeteria on there at all, so I'm just wondering if we know that's where those leaks were coming from, or if it's a future project, so it's just my concern to make sure we. Do it right, do it once, and, and get it done the right way, and you know, money is gonna be an object no matter what, but I'd rather fix it once and, and pay once, than rather try to fix it halfway and have to pay twice on it, so. My, my follow-up question that we do H this summer, uh, you know, when you laid out the plans, the costs for base, the add-ons, the full project. Is that a recommendation for how to phase this, knowing that we'll break H out this year? And then we can phase it with the rest of the base, and then the alternates either, you know, combined or year after year?
No, I, it was the, the base and the adults were kind of done. Uh, combination of what made sense to do together, and then where your higher priorities were. So working with Roger and the staff over there and trying to figure out what's causing the most heartache. And what we can get into, and then allowing, and we broke it out also just to kind of. Give it some space where you guys could decide where the budget lies and how you could break, you know, just giving you options to be able to.
Perfect.
To break it up, if you will, so it really didn't go into phasing, it was more priority of issue and, and what the budget would allow.
Victoria, do you have a question? I saw your hand go up.
Yep, no, just something I was gonna mention, um, we looked at all of the roof during those committee meetings. Um, the area on like the bottom left shows where our newer wing is. And I believe, I'm not sure if it's that wing or a different part of the building, but something is like still under warranty. So some of the roof portions are just not at the point, um, of needing to be done as, as soon or, or having any leaks. Not, maybe not any, that's, you know, um, knock on wood, but, but we did look at all the, the different pieces. Um, which would look at like a twenty-year plan to be able to have all of the roofs kind of covered and, um, and maintained.
Anybody else have any other questions? So I, I guess my, my question for, for you, Shannon, is what is the directive for us here tonight? Is it to vote on H and, and approve H? Because.
And, and I don't, before we get to, to the question, and I don't mean to put you two, Steve and Amy on the spot, but would you like to talk with, about the fight? Like the financial piece of why we, we would consider H and why we would want to move that forward?
Well, and, and my question is, uh, is why, I, I guess. If we do H now, we have the, whatever the financing piece of that is, I mean, I think this needs to be a focus for us to be able to have on a ballot. Next year, whether it's a lease, alright, so that is, that, that is where we're, okay, perfect, thank you, go ahead, Amy, I'll let you continue.
And that's it, so what can we do now, what do we have the money for, what we could do now, that's about a hundred and forty-seven, it's up a little bit, I think it was one forty-three a month ago. I get it, it's no problem, um, and that will, will make it, um, you know, more watertight. And then work in the budget process or the bond process, whatever the board wants, and taking. We talked about what we have in our maintenance trust to put down a piece, and that, that reduces your payment. So if we put a million dollars down on, on whatever scope that they want on the first salvo in the, the big comprehensive project. Um, you know, that really is for the process to see with the, with the budget and or, I mean, and this is gonna have to be a board decision. About whether or not you want a lease, which you put in the budget or bond, which is in this community is, is very connected to it, right? They're very savvy, they're gonna understand, so whatever the transparency is. Um, we're not gonna slide anything through Amherst, oh, they're, you know, shoving it in a, uh, so you get a fifty-one percent. It's gonna have to be what's best and, and how do we do it? Um, but we really do want to start something this summer. And then work in the budget process and financing, does A, does the board want to look at lease, cause that's one option, or they want to go bond? I do believe this community will support of, of this type of project, because it is something we know that is health-related, it is working conditions-related, it is educational condition, and it is. No one toward that school does not believe this is necessary.
Yeah, so I think, Tom, to, to your point about what are we looking for at the committee level, and what's the recommendation? The recommendation is to use, uh, some of the funds that we have now in our expendable trust fund, that the community is expecting us to use for these type, you know, this type of work, to get the work started. And then to carry this exact conversation on now that we have the information that we need to make informed decisions. To move, uh, a plan forward to our community over, over this year, how we're going, and then determine how we're going to fund it, um, like Mr. Chamberlain just said. So get the work started, because it, it has to start, and the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost us, and we do have those funds to get it started. And then to, you know, really lay that project out to the community, so they know what to expect. They know something is coming, because they've seen the leaky roof pictures for multiple cycles now. Um, so to let them know we're, you know, we're dealing with it, and then this is where we need the funding to, to carry on the work.
So for a devil's advocate question, so we were talking the last year, bond, bond, bond for an elementary school project, it's, it's a long-term fix, it takes care of this, we're gonna fund repairs for AMS out of the capital reserve fund. What I'm hearing now is if this bond would have passed for, for Clark Wilkins, we were still going to be coming with this bond potentially for next year. And is, and because it's, we don't have five million due to base, and unless we can phase that base out over individual roofs or, you know, one unit at a time. We're not gonna be able to cash flow that out of the capital reserve fund from, for one year, just based off, you know, one point five, one point six million in that initial five million price tag, so. My concern is what that perception's going to be is we're, alright, well, they were asking for this bond, now they're coming back with this one, which they said they were working on, so. Was this higher costing than we expected, a greater scope of work than we expected? Um, wa- was it just more information than what we originally, we knew what we were getting into?
One of the.
And Tom, that is a criticism, I'm just asking the question.
Fair question, I'm just looking, I'm gonna let Chamberlain answer and.
Really, really trying to solve this for a twenty to twenty-five year, you know, versus, you know, they didn't, this isn't univentilators again.
Yeah.
Right, and, and, and this is try to get stable, more efficient, more effective ventilation, more effective heat, longer term. And also, there's some dehumidification there too, that, that does some working conditions and stuff, so. But, um, as we go through this from here, we can break up the phase and do a roof at a time that we can fund. It's just what tolerance does this community have for, you know, lack of watertightness at the middle school, but.
Yeah.
Um, it, yes, this is a significant project, but the choices that the building ground is recommending is the right system. Ensuring the longest lasting and highest quality in this area, it is not ventilator two. It is not the same forty-year-old technology, we're just gonna shove in the same windows and make the same mistake they made thirty years ago, which means it doesn't last, and it's not. High-quality ventilation and learning conditions.
And so the answer is, we're just, we're doing it the right way, and through the scope of our research, we just found that this is the best way to do it, and what the costs are, which are higher than we anticipated, but we're also doing it the right way. I, I just want us to have that message, because somebody's going to ask that question, where if you pass a school bond, you're trying to get another bond put right on there, that, that looks to me. Um, not disingenuous, but it just looks, it, it's the bad look, yeah, problematic. Victoria has a question too.
Yep, um, so I think a couple of things that are important to note are when we look at the twenty seventeen capital needs assessment. Um, the dollar values that are associated with that are not necessarily, um, today's current costs. So, you know, if we're talking twenty seventeen, and now we're at twenty twenty-three, we're, we have five years in the future. Um, so there's, there's a difference there. Um, another difference with this project is without doing the unit ventilators in the windows themselves. By doing these rooftop units to receive better air quality. Um, you do that whole area at a time. So rather than us breaking this out and saying the roof project is going to cost us X, and the HVAC is going to cost us X. We're doing a certain area in hitting both of those spots. So rather than doing an entirely new roof on areas of the building that don't need a new roof. We're spending that, um, those funds and that, um, kind of eye to the detail on a certain area and. Replacing, making this building come up to date, really is what, is what this is. Through all of our, uh, facility work, we had realized that this building, um, isn't going anywhere, it's not going to be something that, that Amherst abandons. Um, in whatever form it, it, you know, takes on in the future. Um, so it's just at that point for replacing, you know, items that are thirty, some, in some cases thirty years old, and in some cases. Uh, closer to the fifty-year mark in this area.
Thank you, Victoria, so any, any further questions from the board?
Um, can you talk a little bit about how long your estimates are good for? Are, are we able to lock in pricing, I just noticed from our last meeting, the, um, H went up a little bit.
It went up slightly, and, and it was, um. It wasn't due to inflation or anything like that, it was just, um, going over the numbers again and looking out how we broke out. Um, certain areas and, and obviously EEI has, um, the general conditions, right? So it's everything from our supervision to, uh, dumpsters, temporary lighting, things of that nature, you know. Uh, protection of the flooring, what have you, it's all built in there, and, and, uh, we didn't do a very, uh, fair assessment on spreading it out properly, so it did go up a couple thousand dollars.
When we get to a contract, we'll lock in a price.
Absolutely, once we get to that point, we can lock in a price, um, it's. We're definitely, it, it, you, it was mentioned that, you know, pricing came in five years ago. And over the last two or three, we've seen a spike that is just unbelievable, and, and even as more of a GC figure. The numbers that we're getting in them from, from our subs, they used to be, you know, sixty, ninety, a hundred and twenty-day quotes. And now we're seeing thirty-day quotes and things of that nature, so it is, it is hard to, um. You know, see where the forecast is gonna go, and whether or not things are gonna level off, and I, I don't see things dropping, but. Um, when they're gonna level off, it, it, it's hard to say, but as we come into that contract point, yes, we will settle on a price that will hold.
Okay.
Hold fast.
Thank you.
So I think we need to take a motion, I don't think we can put a dollar amount into that motion, but we can go forward with, um, that first phase of this, so do you want to make the motion, Shannon?
I actually have.
Oh. Questions are closed, no, it's fine, go ahead.
Can we, can we go back to the, the general pricing slide? Okay, so if we just went with base, it actually could conceivably be financed by. The amount that we are putting into the capital improvement per year.
Correct, at four fifty-two, seven sixty, but that's only funding, I mean, this whole, this whole roof's gotta get replaced. And so, you know, if we want to look at this as a phasing thing, where we take base bid now, alternate one next year, alternate two the year after or something, you know, you can, you can look at it like that, but you're, ultimately, I think we need to be at that one point three. If we're gonna try to lease it, but I think it's a much more cost-effective thing for us to be able to, um, do the combined fifteen point eight at some point. That's the conversation we have tonight, it's only the hundred and fifty K just to do part of the base bid, to get that cafeteria and stage to stop leaking. But you are right, the number adds up, but that's strictly for the base, once you get to the base and the two alternates. You're already up above what we're putting into the capital reserve fund, which is never guaranteed, that could always get voted down.
Yeah, I know, but. I'm just trying to find a way that we could, to see if there is a way that we could still stay within what we have already, over several years now, proven that. Our. Our taxpayers are willing to support. And, and so since we said, hey, we think we can get most of what needs to happen at AMS done by continuing to use that fund. And that's an amount that even, even if we want the middle number, that's an amount that we could probably make a case for. And be able to get support that way, I see that as being a way to get there, instead of saying, I have this major bond I want. Plus, oh, by the way, I also have this major bond that I want, and okay, maybe I might not get my roof, but I don't get my school, and I really need both. So if I could find a way to fund it somewhere in the middle, where it's maybe not everything I wa- wished and hoped for, but it's functional, and it's better. And it's within what we have proven, they will support, and that we have sort of kind of promised. That we would stay within the realm of, you see where I'm going here?
Absolutely, no, we, but, yeah, I mean, but to do it, I, I think this, this can be a conversation we have at another meeting, cause right now, we only need the one at the hundred and fifty thousand tonight, I think it's a good June conversation, Terry, not to. Rush us through this, but that's gonna take a lot more configurations with the math, because you can do base bid for twenty years, and yeah, we'll stand underneath that capital reserve fund amount, but, but even just going to base bid. With alternate one, you're still okay, you get to alternate two, that's where you start to get out of line, and, and it needs to be done, I mean, this work has got to be done. But I think if we, I think we can have that conversation and dive into the numbers, um, you know, the next time we talk about this, let's get this first project done. Let's get a contract done, and then we can start to have those conversations and decide how we want to try to approach it for the first year.
Yeah, there's a lot of things to consider, I mean, we can look at doing a down payment, um, from the capital reserve, which would lower the, um, the interest payment. Um, and we also have a bond coming due for the, uh, the new wing. Um, in twenty twenty-eight, and that's a couple hundred thousand, um, in debt service per year, so. There's a lot of things that we will want to talk about before the board, um, makes a decision, so we'll have, we'll do a lot of work and be able to present it to you all.
You said, my, follow-up question would be. How much do we currently have available? Um, remind me.
Yeah, I think it's one point.
Point six change.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
One point six after.
Six, we want to leave a hundred thousand per building, so it was like one point. Three something, so.
So is there any way to extend beyond just that hundred and fifty and get a little more done now? That we could feel a difference, I mean, I know that we're taking the most problematic, I get it, that we're being very conservative. Could we maybe add on another chunk of some sorts?
Some of the problem of that is gonna be. S- scheduling, getting equipment, getting materials, we're still seeing long lead times. And to be able to even get H done, to be honest with you, this late in the game. Um, you know, pre-COVID, I'd say yes, let's go all in and do as much as we can, but with lead times and getting materials right now. I don't know that that would even be an option, to be honest with you, it's, it's tough to get H done this year, and, and get all the materials and get the labor on site and. And get it complete before the kids get back to school, so that would be, that would be a very tricky thing to do.
If you were able to, what would be the next one you would do, what would you recommend? If you could have one more chunk up to a million dollars, what other chunk could you possibly do with a million bucks? If we didn't have those other constraints.
You're putting me on the spot because.
I know, I know, I know. It's not a probably a fair question, but.
I.
Especially building and ground.
Uh, yeah, we did talk through all of that, Terry, because I'm exactly where you are and I pushed really hard in those building and grounds meeting because um I, I want as much of AMS watertight before next fall as possible.
Right.
And H really was the option. H is, I, I'm going to use low hanging fruit for a lack of a better term. It's not even a low hanging fruit. It's, it's the only fruit we can really grab um in any meaningful way right now. There were also, as I mentioned earlier, there's some structural steel components to, once you start working with the roof and moving things around in those parts.
Well, that's what I was trying, in my head, I'm trying to run numbers and, and there's, when you start getting into some of those other areas.
Right.
There, there's more than just roofing involved. Now we're talking structural steel, we're talking HVAC equipment, we're talking ceilings. And that's why we broke it out the way we did because we're trying to do everything that falls underneath that roof. And I don't know that there's any way to section off a million dollars worth, you know what I mean?
And that's a fair response. You know what I'm saying? I, I, I absolutely respect where you're coming from and I appreciate you being honest. I mean, don't tell me you can do it if you can't because that would be even worse to be half assed on or, or, or not finished.
There's no doubt we could probably work with the numbers and, and find that area that you're, that you're asking about. Me doing it tonight wouldn't be possible, but me doing it within a week or so, we could come back, I'm certain, and find an area that we could get in that price range. But then again, we're going back to can we actually get the work done this late in the game? This close, you know, we're only a month away from the summer time.
That too, but I think it, and you, Amy and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, that's going, going to then tie us up from if we did as a board, as we're talking future financing for the big, for the whole pie. That ties up our capital to put anything down if we decide to go with a lease option or any of those things. So this was really, this was really the best um step to take in order to get the ball rolling, to get some work done, to see some impact at the school and then allow us the time to decide how we need to um break it up in a way that the community um will support and that we can fund and that works with lead times on materials and labor and all of that.
Yeah, I think we're in, we're in a good spot. I think we know what the costs are now. And now we can figure out how best to break that down. Um, and I hadn't even thought about the actual getting people in here to do that part of it, so.
No, I, I appreciate all of that and thank you because I, I think it's a great start. And, and it's actually more affordable than I might have hoped, so yay for that too. And so thank you for all the, the work and for explaining for all of us who don't know a lot about this, um, bringing it down to our level. I appreciate that.
Do we, I, I, we'll do a motion, but do we need one for you to be able to go forward? The motion, I think, is just to have administration work with.
To move forward on, on H would help us. And then uh we'll have a public hearing in June to take the money out of the trust and this will allow us to enter in a contract with taking money from the um maintenance.
Maybe the hallway next to it? I don't know.
I would like to make the motion to um authorize the superintendent and business administrator to um enter into negotiations with the E I to begin um phase H of the AMS project.
That'll work great.
Can I get a second? All right, uh, Victoria, I will open it up for you for a roll call vote first.
Freeze yes.
White yes.
Gascoigne yes.
Gothier yes.
Beam yes, and thank you committee for all of your work on this.
Beat me to it, Terry. I was going to say the same thing. Matt and Chris, thank you for, for coming down. Uh, Steve and Amy will, will take the next steps and ideally, you, you think we can get H done this, this summer? That's not a problem?
Yeah, it's tight, but I, I, I'm confident.
You're going to have to stand in that roof with that umbrella if it's not done.
Yeah, if I can, I'll, I'll personally stand out there with the umbrella.
You're on the record.
Yeah, I, I know it, I know it.
Thank you both.
Thank you so much for having us.
Appreciate your time.
Being here as a representative.
Yes.
Pocket of the building and grounds committee.
Don't be so shy next time, John. All right, so uh, the next item was the lead mitigation grant. Amy, do you want us to wait on that?
I think we still have two more things under facilities. One is if the board wants to take any other time to debrief last night's meeting as an Amherst school board did work. And then I've got one quick follow up. You with me?
Why don't you do your follow up first, then we can discuss any feedback from last night.
Just, it, it came up the last board meeting. Um, we are still pursuing um the temporary leased portable classroom for additional space. This came up through a connection actually from E I with a, a district um that is no longer in need of a relatively lightly used couple of year portable, doesn't have bathrooms. This is not long term. This is trying to expand some structural space. Um, Roger is working with, with D E W to figure out what it would cost to move, install and connect. Um, just wanted to update the board that we, if remember, did come up at the last meeting, just to update the board and the community that, that we are still pursuing this. Um, we're hoping by June we'll come back with the cost and ask for board approval. If obviously the cost is something we can manage. No, those are, this is an additional. Um, and um, we'll also talk about that Roger's taking a look at. Um, there are actually some funds that have to go in there to re-level those two because they, as said everywhere, they're on their last slide. So um, I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that we are still pursuing increasing our um space. Could be adult space, it could be student space, that's up to Kathleen and her team. But it is essential and, and Mike Barry, Nick, she's been involved in all these, everything that I talk about now. I talked about with Mike because on, on July one. Um, but it is essential to increase our footprint if we can do it in a cost effective way. Um, but that's all. Just want to make sure a heads up.
Thank you.
We're still going.
Okay, uh, any thoughts on last night? Any further discussion we need to have from our, uh, last night? If you haven't watched it, we had our S A U facilities meeting. Uh, a couple of hours, we spent discussing uh the possibilities and, and the ramifications of moving seven, eighth, seventh and eighth grade in some combination to the annex at uh, at South Heagan and then utilizing the current space at South Heagan for their current offerings with all their students as opposed to the majority of their students. We discussed a lot of uh space studies, classroom studies, had some pretty lively conversation at times. Um, anybody want to share their thoughts on this? Anybody have any opinions that they did not share last night? If you haven't watched it, I would recommend watching that meeting. Um, we cover a lot of grounds. Um, I'm not sure we got to where we need to be yet, but I think we've sort of laid the groundwork, Jason.
Yeah, is it okay now that we have two administrators here who are obviously intimately involved with this, to ask them some questions, not expecting answers, but just kind of food for thought about some things that came up last night?
I think, yeah, if they're willing to answer questions on it, sure.
And they, and I appreciate um, both of them were on for the duration last night. I, because I was managing the Zoom, so I can see them and everybody else. So I thank you for doing that, staying engaged on a very long meeting, but please, um, whatever.
Yeah, so my first question is for you, Kristen. And again, I don't expect an, an answer. This is just something that came up last night that if we could get a hard answer to that, I would appreciate at some, at some point because I don't, well, I don't want to bias your answer. So uh, one thing that came up from a South Heagan member was that if we moved seven and eight over to this facility, that that would create better educational opportunities for, let's just say, students seeking enrichment or seeking other experiences. Um, because they might be viewed as accelerated or advanced for lack of better terminology. Um, and again, you don't have to answer this now, but it's kind of like a two part question. Like, how many students or what percentage of the student population do you view is needing that? So that's one kind of question. And then two, other than the arbitrary, like this district, that district thing, what is to prevent, I understand I can't come here because it's district, but what's to prevent, you know, opportunities within AMS as currently structured to provide those types of enrichment opportunities or um, what have you? Not to put you on the spot.
No, that, that's okay. I appreciate you asking, to be honest. Um, because I sat through the Zoom meeting and wanting to share my opinions and thoughts about how I feel about this. Um, so I came from a district that had an attack, like literally our buildings were attached, the high school and the middle school. Um, one of the things that drives that is, is school schedule. You have to be able to have a school schedule that meshes so that students can be a part of their middle school, but then also take classes as needed at the high school. That in, in a neighboring town was only a handful of, of students, uh, one to two students who were accelerating beyond in um generally mathematics uh was the place they were accelerating. It's my understanding that we've been able to provide those opportunities as those individual unique cases come up um, just because of the closeness, the proximity of South Heagan High School being so close to AMS. Um, so we figured it out on a case by case basis. I think it would take a bigger look at programming and what curriculum looks like. Um, if we were to really uh move forward with that or, or if there was an intent to provide uh more of those opportunities. Um, but I personally, uh, as a middle level educator and somebody who has dedicated eighteen years of her life to middle school education, plus my own middle school education, um, per, I would prefer to start by looking at what we can do within my school building um before we go outside. Because I think there's more we can do on the inside before we, we go beyond.
Follow up, Jason?
Uh, to move over.
Chris, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, second question.
Yeah, second, yeah, question, question number two. Um, now I almost forgot, hang on, give me a moment. Uh, yeah, so another thing that, that's come up, and again, don't expect an answer now. It's just something like food for thought to think about is, you know, we, meaning we like the board, last year put on a, a large, we'll call it a large elementary school. We know that that's what the population is and that's what we expect the population to be. And, you know, it came up when we talked about seventh and eighth grade here, how that would make this school belong to an eleven hundred student school. And one of the rebuttals from a South Heagan member was, well, you're talking about building a nine hundred student elementary school and the inappropriateness that that might be. Could you speak to, you know, and if you can't now, I totally understand. It's kind of like a.
Yeah.
Uh, but like, how could you uh, as an administrator, manage that so that those relationships, right? Because we know student teacher relationships are something important. How could you manage a larger elementary school and, and, you know, or maybe what are the challenges with that? And what support would you potentially be looking for from the board?
Yeah, those are great questions. Um, I would say right now we are managing the largest school in the district in two physical buildings, which proves to just add lots of challenges. One thing that will be solved by having this building, you know, put together is we no longer have two physical spaces, right? So um, we're managing but parent drop off buses at both places at the same time, attempting to help with the flow of traffic and people and um almost duplicating efforts in a lot of ways with some of those day to day building operations, which are challenging. And, you know, the, the numbers, it would be less challenging, even if there were more students, if we were in one location than um what it is right now, just having to be into. Um, so I think that is something that is a benefit to, you know, the physical safety and the structure of just day to day running of the school, the buses, the parent drop off, um, the security of the building. Um, I would also say, you know, as we think about a larger school, we, you know, have models in place right now at Clark Wilkins that we've built up, um, you know, focused on teacher leadership and shared governance within the building. Those would continue um so that teachers had a voice and that there was an opportunity for a smaller school within a school type model where there would be collaboration amongst, um, you know, vertical teams of teachers um that could share students along the trajectory of their, um, you know, journey with us at Clark Wilkins. Um, you know, there's definitely going to be challenges to having larger numbers, but we're kind of used to larger numbers. And I think sometimes we, people don't realize just how large we already are. Um, and our teachers do it um in conditions that are really challenging as it is. So imagine having the opportunity for real collaboration space for teachers um where they can sit down and talk about students and they're not behind the stage. Um, you know, moving in between, you know, boxes to try to talk to each other about kids and curriculum. Um, you know, I think while, yes, there are more students, the benefits, you know, really could outweigh, um, outweigh the number there, in my opinion.
Terry?
All right, I'm getting used to it. Um, so thank you. And I love when you, when you geek out and use all the words that I now understand, most of them. Um, but my questions are along the lines of, I'll be quite honest, I am not currently in favor of separating out seventh and eighth. That, that is not where I am and that is not what I think is appropriate. And I don't, um, you know, one of the things that's really exciting, especially socially, and I think that social emotional always has to be part of this, right? We are looking to, it's very um much a desire in our community to bring fifth grade back down and have them be part of elementary. It is very much a desire to let there be leadership and let that um core of students, that sixth through eighth really be able to coalesce and grow together and get to where they're ready to move over. And there are ways that we can deal with the transition better. We, we already do a lot. There are always ways we can improve. There are ways that we can give enrichment opportunities for our eighth graders and do some sharing across. And again, it already exists, we can do more of it. So there are ways that we can already do that. What I am more interested in, and I was really excited to hear the South Heagan meeting before the meeting last night, with some of these ideas of maybe um giving us a little bit of breathing room if they were able to, say, move Makerspace over and use that space that fits in a way that is more appropriate to our curriculum right now at the middle school, where we don't use all of that machinery on a day to day basis. But it could be something that helps their engineering program and their, their opportunities here. And I would like to hear a little bit about what you think about that as someone who currently has that as part of your program. And then in the same way, I know preschool, we're just saying, hey, we don't want to split things up. However, if we did split out something, taking our youngest learners and partnering them with our high school learners and having a program there where it wouldn't be perfect, but it is something that I can see there being an added value and being worth the challenge. So I'd like, on each of those, I would love to hear your thoughts.
Sure, so I'll start with the Makerspace piece. Um, Makerspace piece is, is really a, a part of our um I N D room that we currently have. Um, I would say, you know, I'm having a hard time picturing it as, as being a classroom space. I mean, it does give us a bit more space um if we were to move that stuff over. Um, personally, I would love to see, and I've had many talks with Christine and our uh curriculum coordinator uh at the middle school about this. But um, you know, a lot of, a lot, there was a lot of discussion last night about C T E.
Right.
Uh, and I feel like our, I would love to see our middle schoolers get more experience in some of these hands on C T E type skills. And, and um, it would be, not that they couldn't come over to the Makerspace or come over and, and use that equipment, but um, I would be sad for that, for that to go away. Um, I don't know that what I would shift into that room. Um, you know, I'd toss around the idea of shifting, you know, our, our I T department into that space or shifting um, you know, some other, some other, you know, integrated arts classes in order to, to alleviate, alleviate some room. Um, it does not really fix the bigger picture space issues. It's, it's a puzzle piece, um, but I don't believe that it fixes the bigger space issues. And I would prefer to hold on to the equipment we have and to look at better ways to utilize it to give our middle schoolers uh more hands on experiences. That's, that's where I'm at.
I appreciate that because I had them before. Yeah.
Terry, I think um, it's a, it's a great question and it's also a timely one. I engaged in a conversation with Meg Beauchamp um this morning, a little bit about preschool too. Um, as you can see, the numbers in my principal's report, our preschool program has grown. We're at fifty-four current students right now. The start of next school year, we are going to be at sixty students right away at the start of the year. Um, based off of in providing those ratios of a fifty fifty um split between special education students requiring the program and um in servicing uh typical peers through a tuition model. Um, these are largely all Amherst students. Um, we have a few Mont Vernon students who tuition into the program, but not as um our typical peers. Uh, you know, we're servicing those students um in our special education environment. Um, the program is built as an Amherst preschool, right? I think if we were to, to move that out as a program, I would say that might take more visioning from the S A U perspective of, you know, is that going to be designed as now an S A U preschool? Um, I also would say we love having preschoolers in our building because we get these students when they are three or barely three. We get to know them when they're a little before three and then we get to keep them until they're ten. Um, and we get to know families really well and help transition their babies into the school environment. Um, and we can kind of ensure some consistency in their educational planning. What um would, what worries me is the number of transitions um across a, a child's career. If we were to move that program outside of Clark Wilk. If we were to move that program outside of Clark Wilkins, you could potentially have a just three year old starting here at the high school, right? And then moving to Clark maybe for kindergarten, um, and then moving from Clark to Wilkins and then Wilkins to AMS. And, you know, seventh and eighth grade was in the annex, then you would go AMS to annex and annex to the high school. And that's a lot of transitions for a student across their, um, experience, right? So I think that's definitely a challenge. Our staff are shared too. Current preschool staff work with kindergarten students. If we don't house the program in the same building, we're not able to easily share those staff members. And or, and help with the consistency across a child's program, that they build a rapport with a speech therapist, an occupational therapist. And maybe that person needs to change because we can't move those individual, uh, individuals around as easily. I think that's something, you know, we really just need to consider, um, in, in making these decisions. We also are only using three classrooms for preschool. So the physical space for the classroom size, i- it's a net of three. We run five sections in those three classrooms. So, um, I don't know that it's going to give us more space than. I don't know how it would, if it would truly benefit in providing us with enough space to then value out. The, um, idea of moving the students away from the building.
No, that, and that's fair. And that's why.
Yeah.
Because. We're looking at incremental a way to get, I'm sorry.
We're trying to like put every option on the table. And so I guess my follow up question would be, and I'm sorry, I, I only asked for one and I'm. So. If, let's say, So He can came to us and said, all right, we could give you. I don't know, six classrooms. We have six of the first floor of the annex that do whatever you want with, if it'll help you out. What, what would you recommend doing with that that would actually be helpful? Because apparently all of us non educators coming up with ideas has not gotten something that sounds like it would be that helpful to you. Is there anything you could use?
So I, I, I don't know, Terry, that, that's a, a conversation we can use tonight because in, in the end, whatever solution we're going to do has to be a permanent solution. And I don't think it's fair for, for Kristen to put her on the spot for that. Not, fair is not the right word, but. I think that if we want to have this, uh, again, with this board in June or another month to talk about this and really flesh this out. To me, we're, the more buildings we add, the more complexity this creates. And I think that what we saw tonight with, uh, one of the first things we did tonight, we just signed a three year contract with the AEA. That bargaining unit is going to drive as much of this as anybody. We're going to have ASSA impacts that come into, into play here. So this to me is a down the road conversation. Once we get presented with something that's actually tangible from South Heagan. Whether they can do it, if their vision fits this, because, uh, I think from my vantage point, it's an all or nothing spectrum. We can't, we're not going to, it doesn't make any sense to use six building rooms. If we don't have that entire building and there's a plan to incorporate those students as part of South Heagan. Then I think it's a, it's, it's a pointless exercise because there's, there's no way to make that work. Shannon? Can we wait till the public comment, John?
Okay, thank you. So to your initial question, Tom, which was reflections on last night, um, I've been giving it a lot of thought today. It, it was a long meeting and, you know, I think in the end, we didn't walk out the door with that clear, um, guidepost that we were all hoping for. I do think it was an important conversation, um, to have in a, in a public setting with all three boards present. My takeaway from that meeting, um, was that really, um, the South Heagan Cooperative School Board. Has some work to do to figure out how they want to utilize, you know, whatever excess space they have. And they're just at the beginning of having that conversation. So they need to have that conversation. For us here in Amherst, we have impact fees, um, to keep working towards a solution for our district. I think that we need to begin that work and to do that. And if South Heagan in short order figures out that they have, you know, extra space, whether it's six rooms or a whole building. Then we can have this visioning conversation that says, oh, this space is available and could we use it? How could we use it? But I think right now we have to move with, you know, with what we have. Knowing that, you know, that could, that could come up and, you know, ha- continue having those conversations there. But my sense from listening to their discussion and from watching their meeting last week was they have a whole lot of ideas for how they could use this building. That, um, would benefit our high school students. So I think we need to let them work that out. Um, and see where they land because I don't, I wasn't clear from, from what I listened to with their board or in their board meeting. That they're overwhelmingly just, you know, jumping up and down, saying that that's how they want to use the space. I heard them say a lot of things like, you know, we could develop CTE programs and, you know, they had a lot of ideas for how they could benefit our high school students, which sounded really great. So I think we should let them flesh that out, um, keep, keep the conversation on the table, but, but move forward with, um. With what we need and, and, and I'm just gonna, you can stop me if I'm taking up too much time, please, Tom. But our survey that's out to the community right now and that will remain open, the recreation department's going to send it out for us. I know Ms. Parisi's been in contact with the Lions Club and the Garden Club and different groups in town because we really want to cast a wide net. To get, uh, a wide demographic of people giving us some feedback, but right now we're up to four hundred and one responses. With forty six percent of survey respondents answering the question. And so the question is, in your opinion, which statement best describes how you would like the Amherst School Board to proceed? Forty six point nine percent of respondents said they would like us to develop a bond proposal that's smaller in scope and budget. So, you know, I think we have some direction. I think our community is expecting us to come back with. You know, something for our, for our district that is, you know, a little more palatable to the taxpayer. So I think we should get started on that.
Victoria?
Yep, I was going to echo, um, basically what, what Shannon said. I think So He can has a lot of work to do on, on their end to figure out, um, how they want to use their space and, and to agree upon what space they're talking about. But from Ms. Facy's, uh, explanation of impact fees, it seems, and our work already with Vanwell Architects. It seems that we can work together with them, um, to kind of look at some different options that would not include the annex space. And then with that idea of if that annex space becomes available and if they tell us that, then we could look at any options to include that. But I, I do think it's something that we should move forward with on our board's end because I think there's work that can be done. Separate from waiting for So Hegan.
I think that's a, a good transition to Amy. Do, would you like to review impact fees? I'm going to catch up guard there. And if not, Terry, these aren't good questions. It's just that we can ask a thousand what if questions, but until we have some direction from what that board wants to do. I don't want to make a plan for our board to count on South Heagan as a viable space for us until there's any indication.
But I just wanted to have them in, inform rather than us bring ideas without them informing us how they could possibly, that really was the, the gist of that.
And, and I think if they get presented with something, we get presented with something, yeah, exactly. Amy?
Yeah, so we should, I believe it's with the new packet?
Uh, you sent it to us separately.
Oh, okay.
It was in the packet as well. It was in the packet as well, yes.
You want to present? Or you want to share it with me so I can show the Zoom people? You probably already did share it. Whoa, that was, that was tone there. Anybody hear tone then? Oh, I'm thinking tone.
So whilst you, um, getting that set up. Um, I have had some meetings with the finance director, uh, at, in the town hall and. Got some information on impact fees, got all the, the legal ordinances. They actually hired a consultant to help them sort of work through, um, the process and what potential, um, projects are eligible. So I did some research and leaned out really the most pertinent information and created this small, little, um, impact fee. Timer.
I found it.
You have it?
But it's not opening.
So basically, yes, in, impact fees are fees that are assessed on development.
Here it goes. I got it.
Okay, so impact fees are fees that are assessed on developments. They can only be spent on public capital facilities. With a useful life of at least five years. And they need to enhance the capacity or level of service provided by that capital facility. Fees not spent within six years of collection are refunded to the property owner. There you go.
We're moving.
All right, next page. There we go. So, um, fees are collected in five categories, police, fire, rescue, recreation, schools and roads. So we are, um, only eligible to grab those fees for schools. So, so this is just a definition of public capital facilities. So, um, it's facilities and equipment owned by the town of Amherst, the school system. Um, and which have a useful life of no less than five years. So they're pretty specific with the types of costs. It does not include operation, maintenance, repair. So we can't just take these funds and, um, use them to, to fund any of our, our maintenance or repairs. But they do include costs for planning, engineering, design, land acquisition and other reasonable costs. So some examples, um, for the use of fees and these came from a memo that the consultant who was hired by the town, um, put forth. So we could use them to offset existing bond payments. So we could actually use them to offset the bond payments that we have now. That are set to retire in FY twenty eight. And as I talked about, other capital improvements that are in compliance with ordinance, um, and the definition of, of public capital facilities. For So Hegan. It would be that we can use funds that are in alignment with the tax impact apportionment between the town of Amherst and the town of Mont Vernon. That was explained to the So Hegan Board at their meeting, uh, last week. And we also talked about it a little bit last night at the SAU Board Meeting. Um, as I said, the, the funds are held for six years and if they're not used, then they go back to the developer. We can also use the funds to offset, uh, bond payments for a new construction, a large improvement project, a large expansion project. And if that happens, we're gonna, we would want to update, uh, the school impact fee to recognize the change in spatial standards. Because the study was done based on previous spatial standards and those have been updated. So the process, um, for us is to submit a, an approved school board request. To the Board of Selectmen identifying the, the facility and just, and giving them a brief explanation so that they can review it. And ensure that our request is in compliance with the law and the town policy. For So Hegan, as I touched on, we would need to identify the proportionate cost share. Which we would propose using the tax impact apportionment between the town of Amherst and Mont Vernon, which is roughly eighty five percent Amherst, fifteen percent Mont Vernon. The fees for So Hegan would only be applied to the Amherst portion of the capital expenses. And sorry for talking about So Hegan, but it's, it is relevant to the conversation, um, based on last night. So, uh, the board would approve a request and then that would go to the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen would, um, would be the, the, the body that would authorize, uh, the dispersment. So the last page, I just have a, um, a recommended board motion. There's also a memo in your packet that talks about the, um, the amount of funds. That I was last told are available. It might have changed, but it was about two hundred and twenty five thousand. The split that we use between Amherst and So Hegan is sixty forty, so Amherst would, um, would get a sixty percent split. That's a split we've used in, in other, um, funding. We use that for Lawrence Balding and. So it's a historical, um, dispersment or proportion that we've used. So Amherst would be eligible for up to a hundred and thirty five thousand, uh, for architectural and engineering fees. For the elementary school renovation project. So. This is just information for you folks to talk about. If you want to move forward, then we would need a board motion. And I actually have a letter that I think was in your packet also. I drafted, um. A letter that we can certainly change, but it would need to be signed by the board chair.
Most fun for me.
Yeah, okay.
If we approve it.
Yep, okay.
Uh, any questions? We want to make a motion and then discuss first?
I'll make the motion to authorize a request to the Amherst Board of Selectmen for impact fees to be used for architectural and engineering fees for the elementary school renovation project. In the amount of up to one hundred thirty five thousand dollars.
Okay. Wait a second. Shannon with a second. So discussion on this.
And actually I forgot to add, I did have a, a pre meeting with Vanwell, um, Steve, I think.
Yep.
Was in the meeting as well, and we talked about this as potential. Sorry to like get ahead, but thought it would be useful. So they think that, um, Ingrid thinks that the, the amount that we're proposing, there's certainly. It's enough money to fund this. So she thinks, she thinks that we would not need to expend all of that.
We can get an alternate, um, warrant ready. Document with these funds. And those is work about how we scale it. Working with our, with Vanwell as a firm, we could get a warrant ready, a supported number.
So essentially a smaller warrant than what we've put on there the last couple of years, okay?
Yeah, we, we talked about potentially a smaller, um, facility as well as potentially an additional. Um, an addition to the existing building. So they would be, um, able to look at those options.
Okay. Would they be able to do both?
Yeah, she said that they would.
I think it's important. I think we heard back that it's important to have those two items.
Yep.
Very interesting what the costs are. I mean, I'm getting salty already thinking about it, so.
I know.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm excited. I'm hopeful thinking about it. Um, I do have a question and maybe offering an amendment to the motion. This is specific to the elementary school and I wonder if it would be a better idea to, um. Phrase it as, you know, schools in the Amherst School District or something as, you know, if we get into the work, if there's options for Vanwell to cost out. I, I don't know, but I just don't know that we want to limit it to the elementary or if it, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's. Not material, but.
Just have to make sure that, um, you know, we, we can't get everything. You know, we can't get three, you know, they won't give us three different projects including it, but fraud right now is good thing.
Sure, yeah, I, I just don't want to tie our hands, I guess, if we don't have to.
Do you want to amend the motion?
Sure, so I guess I would like to offer an amendment to the motion. Oh, man, I had my little late, my cheat sheet somewhere and I don't have it in front of me. Um, my amendment to the motion to read, um, authorize requests to the Amherst Board of Selectmen for impact fees to be used for architectural and engineering fees. For the Amherst School District renovation projects and the amount of.
You have to identify the, the public facilities, so I would identify the two school projects for the two schools. Clark Wilkins is one school.
Clark Wilkins and AMS.
Yeah.
Yeah, fees for the Clark Wilkins and AMS renovation project. I'm thinking like, even if we wanted to do like a minor secure entrance sequence at the middle, you know, just something that we've, yeah. So, um, for the Clark Wilkins Elementary School and Amherst Middle School. Renovation projects in the amount of. One hundred and thirty, up to one hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. That was clunky, sorry.
I saw your hand raised, Victoria. I don't know if you still had a question or not.
I do not.
Okay. Uh, so I'll take a, a second on the amended motion. Now we amended, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a second on that. Further discussion on, on that item? Okay, so we'll. Call a vote before I do that. So that gives you enough to work with now to start engaging with Vanwell, correct? We can submit this letter to, uh, the selectmen. Once we have that letter back, the approval for this, then we can engage Vanwell again and start to look at those multiple options.
Yes.
Okay, so with that, I'll start off with Victoria for a roll call vote.
Parisi, yes.
This is on the amended motion, yes.
Yep, Parisi, yes.
All right, White, yes.
Gascoigne, yes.
Gothier, yes?
Uh, sorry, I'm trying to, um.
Bemis.
Okay, so next step Shannon is just go to Amherst Building and Grounds. Is it something we're going to discuss as a board? What, what do you envision this next phase being? I feel like this is a board discussion at this point. At our, at one of our next meetings to really talk about. I feel like this is a board discussion at this point, at our, at one of our next meetings to really talk about, and really probably meet with Banwell too at some point. And we need to sit down with them and.
We have a board workshop.
Yeah.
A a workshop with the vendor just to talk, and that's where the discussions of all come from. But I think it's a workshop more than a meeting.
Yeah, that, yeah, I mean, if you're asking my opinion and vision, yeah, I think as a board, we should really, before we, you know, set the Building and Grounds Committee with marching orders, we need to be clear on what we're looking at and for. And Building and Grounds is pretty engaged in the in the Amherst AMS project right now, so.
Yeah, it's fair. I think we can do that, and we can meet with Banwell and have that workshop and hash out some ideas and and give them some marching orders where we should go.
Just focus on that, not the whole meeting. You're picking it up and putting it down.
Yeah, just do a, much like we did last night, but smaller and with Banwell.
So Tom, I'll amend the letter, and we'll grab the minutes and I'll get it together, and I'll get it over to the Selectmen, and and we may or may not need to go to the meeting.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Uh, lead mitigation grant, Amy. I believe we need to do this tonight, correct?
Yeah, this is, this is just pretty quick. So.
I didn't always say that because I believe we had talked about it briefly last meeting, but decided to do it during May, so I wanna make sure that we do it.
So you actually have done what we needed to do as part of the grant, um, public hearing and accepted the funds.
Yeah.
So this is really just information for you all. So prior to Roger and I coming on board at the SEU, there was grant work done to mitigate lead at the Amherst Middle School. And as part of a a larger grant mitigation program. So it was discovered by us that the grant was never closed out and the funds were never received because the Hampshire Department of Environmental Services never received the information that they needed in order to close it out for us to get the funds. So this was a bit of a science project, no pun intended, for Roger and I. But we were able to go back and work with contractors, perform the work, and find the information that we needed, which was any testing that was completed needed to be sent to them. And then it was discovered that some some places hadn't been tested, and so needed to be tested and and information sent to them. So Roger and I got all of that completed. We had to go through costs and figure out what was eligible, what wasn't. And in the meantime, we did discover that there were some areas of non-drinking water faucets that were higher than the the level, the accepted level. There weren't areas where students were drinking, but we instead, we we decided shut those down. Would do work on the filters, get it cleaned up, and so that that work is happening. Put up signs, non-potable. So that has all happened, and we are continuing to test. We're looking at the types of filters that we have, making some improvements there. There's, there's lead reduction filters versus lead removal filters. So we're, we're, you know, crossing our Ts, but the water is safe at the middle school, I will say. But there are some areas of non-potable where we don't want students drinking. So that's the the health side. The financial side is, we just, we were able to re, to be reimbursed for over sixty-two thousand dollars of funds that, these were funds that were spent in a prior year, and we're now able to to capture those funds in this year. So that was, that was a nice bonus to get those funds back for the district.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from the board on that item? And we approved the funds last meeting, so. All right, Amy, I'll let it, uh, I'll stick with you, and Armia, Steve will introduce it, but we do have default budget and unassigned fund balance update.
Yeah, I'm gonna hit both of those, and then Amy can kick me under the table when I mess up. Let's talk a little bit about undesignedated fund balance. We're in May. June's coming, and this is the time we take, we were monitoring, we were monitoring in fact, for a couple of months, trying to determine whether or not there'll be funds for end-of-year projects. So just a little bit where we are. Article eighteen, which was six hundred and five thousand to the capital facility repair, maintenance, improvement trust pass. That's a wonderful thing. That's a, it's a great, a part of that day. Teachers contract that article passing is really good. Hopefully, we'll have a budget passed next year. So that's six hundred and five thousand dollars that we committed out of, right, unreserved funds. During the process, when we started talking tax rate, we estimated and committed to seven hundred seventy-five thousand dollars coming back from unreserved tax, unreserved funds as revenue to reduce taxes. So that is one point three eight million dollars, six oh five and seven seventy-five. Everybody with me? Now, the seven seventy-five is a good number. The year before, that was over one point one million. So the district swallowed, if you will, almost a half a million dollars in tax rate. So next year, we're gonna be in a better place for tax rate. So anything above one point three eight million will be available for end-of-year projects. One point three eight million, three, you know, three percent of the budgets, default, secondary default. Talking with Amy and Katie, would not be surprising that we will just meet our estimate for tax as well as as the maintenance trust. We feel very good about that. But having funds above that, it it, we're not quite sure. We have been, as a leadership team, as a big leadership team and senior leadership team, taking a look at what if we had this. And I guess a couple of projects that are there is eighty-seven thousand dollars for cameras. Middle school, fifty-six thousand dollars cameras at Clark Wilkins. Well, we need an upgrade, a significant upgrade to our video cameras in our schools. That's safety-related, that's support. So that is probably, I can't say that this is a definite first and second, because we're not there yet, but this, that's on our list. And as most people know, continually to make, for me, libraries are a significant part of what I believe is supports a high-quality reading program. The next for me, and we'll have more discussion about this, would continue with library furniture purchase, fifteen thousand dollars if we had it to continually to create a welcoming and significant, and they've done great work. I love, I got a chance to see. And it is different. It already is different, but continue that work. And that money, anything we do there, and all this money, if when we do go, cameras can be moved and library equipment obviously moves. If we're, we're not putting anything into something that would be, you know, would be expired, if you will, when when we have another building. We'll keep you up, but in June, we'll come with you where we are. And if there is a hundred, hundred and fifty, we will have recommendations, but look for safety and security stuff and stuff that we have really a challenge getting through a budget. As Kathleen knows, we didn't, we had some progress in in furniture, but it's obviously difficult. It will be difficult next year. There's some paving stuff that we're gonna look at, some fillities. There's all sorts of stuff, you know, that will be further down the list. But we'll have a more comprehensive approach when we know if we have a number. But right now, I feel very good that we will meet our seven seventy-five and our six oh five, our tax relief and our expendable trust fund. One point three eight million left over is a good thing. So that's the fund balance portion of our chat.
Okay. Questions? Everybody okay? Shannon?
I would just say I favor any upgrades that we could do on the safety and security front as a primary place. And then on the library furniture purchases, that at all of the schools or are we focusing just in one?
Right now, it's the the focus Clark Wilkins.
Okay, are we looking to standardize that, like across, like across?
It's about my appropriate.
Yeah.
And we want, we wanna make sure that all the, all the furniture that we buy is about my appropriate. Littles have a different library. Sometimes they have these nice houses and little snuggle places. Middles.
I mean, I'm.
We don't really want snuggles.
Of a certain age, and I like snuggle places too, so I think all our schools might like that. Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Sorry.
All right, um, just remind me, we had a grant earlier, and we did radios with that, right?
Um, so for our safe grant?
Yeah.
So the safe grant this year, we did upgraded the entire controlled access at at both our school, at the middle school and the elementary school.
Okay.
So we're gonna be one card, District Y, which is a big thing. I met with actually the police today. And at the May twenty-fifth SEU meeting, I'll be writing a report on a summary of where we are, if you remember, on security for an SEU. Remember that? And we also did, as Amy mentioned, our visitor management system.
Okay.
That was our safe grant this year. But we have a significant, actually, one of the discussions we've had with with Roger and Brian as a leadership team is ensuring that we have replacement costs. Like for cameras, we we might be talking about a a trust fund for security items next year in our budgets, because this is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we probably have fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in other infrastructure for security that we have to make sure we plan for replacement, so we didn't, so we're not chasing it all the time. To be honest, we're chasing the cameras right now as opposed to planning. We can say that cameras are gonna be about eight years and replacing it. You with me?
Yeah, no, and and that's why I ask, because I know that that, I just wanna highlight the fact that we are consistently trying to do safety-related things. And I know that we've had some improvements this year, and so I'm always happy to have more. And I actually really like that idea of knowing that we want to always stay current, and we, I I would love to hear more about that.
And also part of the development of our five-year tech program, so that we're able to plan and have, know where the funds are coming from, what the expenditures are. So, yeah, so similar to Roger's facilities.
Yep.
We wanna do the same thing for tech.
Oh, music to my ears. All right, thank you.
Yep, working on it.
I I don't wanna get the hopes up too much. One point three eight million is a significant accomplishment. We may not be able to go beyond that. But we're at one point one and change right now, two months to go. There's some things that we, you know, the the encumbrances. So I feel very good, but I I don't think it's gonna be three, four hundred grand we're gonna have to spend at the end of this little adventure. Um, let's talk a little bit about default budget. So in a month ago, we we had our first meeting, and we talked about priorities of the board, priorities of leadership team, about where we are, trying to go from. Right, we had a proposed budget that was turned down. We had a value in the default budget, but the default budget is not a real budget because it doesn't support a necessary expensive, like transportation, like some other things. So we had to turn this into a recommended default. And we're close, but some of the things that were board priorities a month ago, we're gonna report out now. So, and one of these was time-sensitive. The time-sensitive piece was the two fellows through the St. A's program, which is about, I've talked about twenty-six hundred hours of literacy and numeracy support, working with two certified teachers who are in the process of getting their special ed certification. Because of the competition for the fellows, we had to pull that trigger pretty quick, or we're gonna lose the opportunity. So working with Kathleen, some some check-ins, just some conversations with Tom, with Meg, with Amy, with the leadership team, we were able to secure two fellows, as I wrote about in board notes, and how the funding, what we had to do is make sure we had the funding. And so there's four opportunities, I think, that we're gonna look at. We don't have to decide that tonight, but we did meet and and sign contracts because that was a priority of the board. We are having a a pretty good hiring season. Last year was a a wonderful hiring season, which you budget and hire people under the below. But we're doing okay there. So it is possible. The board will have a choice and and manage how we do that. It could be savings in hiring, it could be savings in the general fund, or it could be savings in the special ed budget. Those are all could's, and I can't secure fifty thousand dollars worth of expense without a guarantee. And what we have, and it's always up to the board, we do know that we have support from Meg, from the leadership team and Mike, if we need to take out the special education trust. These are stu, these are two fellows that'll be working with special ed and training in the special ed world. Perfectly appropriate. We looked at the guidelines of the special education trust, and the board will manage this as we go. But I had to secure that we had funding in a way that we weren't gonna sacrifice other areas. So it's a decision as we'll go, and we'll keep the board updated. We had a meeting with the directors of the programs, with Kathleen, with Meg. And one of the things that, just some, just this year's stuff, we've hired three special education teachers this year. Seventy-seven, seventy-four, eighty-six thousand dollars. Okay? It's a tough market, and it is. If we hire one certified special education teacher went through the fellow program, we will save, based on that, thirty-five thousand dollars in one hiring. You do that for ten years, we saved three hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus. This year, we got, it paid for itself this year, but if we hire someone, and with Kathleen ambassadorship about Clark Wilkins with another that, we actually hired a a St. A's regular education student teacher, we'll call him fellows, at at BA one and and or master's one. So this is great now, but it's also a great future because the only special education kitchen, special education teacher that are coming across our right now are mid-seventies and higher. This is a spec, certified special education teacher in the low fifties. You're picking up what and putting, this is in our educational best interest. It is our final best interest, financial best interest, and it serves as a great ambassadorship for our schools. So what, I wanna be clear, though, and leadership team and talk with Brian, where we are and talking with Kristen, maintaining the two-to-one program in fifth grade and ensuring we have a baseline in all the other devices now can go six, seven, eight. We will be looking, if we maintain our two-to-one program and technology in fifth grade, that all the, the entire middle school will have devices less than three years old, which means they hold their charge. You know, we have extra, I'm talking, we have some in reserve, but the primary ones that we could, the entire school, with me, because we, because we put influx in fifth, the extra fifths now go to six, and we refresh the entire system of devices. And that's why it's critical that we didn't cash in devices for the middle school. We took it out of either saving, saving, savings, or if that doesn't work, trust. So it is not our recommendation that we yank this. We need to stabilize our devices because right now, the inconsistency in charging and the inconsistency of device makes it very difficult to implement. So the two-to-one program will be implemented, which refreshes the entire stream of devices. You with me? So that's the fellow piece. We are not rec, we are not bringing tonight a recommended default vote. The reason why we're not is because of the variable enrollment. Right now, and I don't know if it changed today. Did it change today? So every time Kathleen, and every Kathleen and I talk about this a lot. So we're at one oh five in kindergarten, and we're at one third, we're about more notes, I think, and it's so accurate, one hundred and thirty. One oh five in kindergarten makes, at six, makes us a seventeen to eighteen kindergarten. One thirty at seven makes it seventeen, eighteen in first grade. During the budget process and transparency of the community, we had an additional teacher, a more probable not, based on NASDAQ where we were, probably in kindergarten. Could it go like this year, we, you know, we had a bump, we've already had ten kids added to to first grade. But when I, I spoke about this a lot ways and means, and I spoke about this at PTA, most of this attention was based on NASDAQ. We thought we were gonna need it in other one for kindergarten, and we still, and that number was one oh six. The one oh six projection that I talked about throughout many events warranted the additional staff member. You with me? Now, we're not there yet. Obviously, it's May. Now, if it's one oh five, August twenty-sixth, or one oh six, August twenty-sixth, I'm, that makes me relax. One oh six and one oh five in May, I think in the next three months, we'll get another ten, twelve kids. Every seven kids increases your class size by one. So you know what I'm saying? If it was August eighteen, twenty-second, the odds are guys getting ten kids le- less. So we're close. We're at one oh five. We have a competitive hiring environment, but with transparency where we are in default, we're not necessarily ready to pull the trigger tonight. But based on the numbers, we may pull the trigger in June and then try and hire another teacher. Now, where are we getting that position? And this even, you know, we talked about non-public before because the staff member, the staff member has been informed. We are, we are putting, we are having an instructional coach at the middle school held, so we're not riffing anybody. We're just reassigning a certified teacher to a certified position, but we will not have an instructional coach next year. That position, because of the budget, we will slide to a a an extra position at the elementary school if, in fact, the enrollment warrants it. You with me? That's where we are getting the funds for there because the budget did not pass. The staff member knows, that staff member has a job, it's within the CBA, and this is what we're doing. But I'm not comfortable as giving a contract to an instructional coach. May sixteenth, today, we're at one oh five. Now, if the board doesn't wanna pull at one oh six, that's the board's prerogative, but it was every time that I spoke about this budget and in writing, I think in the presentation, it was one oh six, seven. You witness, so that was, so that's not a surprising. Now, we're, we're working Kathleen because we may have another ten first graders by then, and it may be the priority, working with the building administration and all the discussions, you know, Christine and us and everybody to figure out is a first grade at nineteen, eighteen, better than a kindergarten. You with me? We, we're not committing tonight, but I wanna, but June, it's time because we're gonna start paying some bills. We'll have a recommended default coming. And if we have to, we will make a default, and we just won't utilize that instructional coach position yet, but it will, we don't have to recommend default tonight. We're not paying any bills tonight, but in June, that'd be the last time I see you for a little bit. That make sense? Yeah, I hit it all. I think I got it all.
Okay, any, uh.
So that's the default and the fund balance. You with me? That's it, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Are there any questions on that, Victoria?
Just a quick comment. Thank you, Steve, for figuring out all those different things and trying to hit upon all the things that we said were all priorities for you.
Now, please know, this is Amy, Christine, Kathleen, this is everybody. I get to talk to a lot of people who are into it and think about this, want to do what's best for kids. This is truly, we we all figure this stuff out together. So I appreciate it. I appreciate all the work everybody around this table does, trying to do what's best for kids. What drives this is what's best for kids. I truly, that's what, I know people out there know, so I think that, but what drives this work is what. Um, I truly, that's what, I know people out there notice I think that, but what drives this work is what is best for kids. Now, we fight about it sometimes, but we fight about not what's best for Kathleen or Kristen or Amy or Christine. What is best for kids? I promise you, that's what we do.
Terry?
So I just, I think I understand. I want to make sure I'm, I'm clear. We, we were able to keep our fellows.
Yes.
And we have committed those and I, you will let us know in June if we're paying for that with regular budget or if we need to dip into the special education.
I, I think it'd be a discussion for the board to figure out how we want to pay for that.
Okay, so that discussion's coming later, but that is an option if, if needed.
And you don't have to make that decision until January, February.
Okay, so, so that is one option, but we absolutely do have those locked down and I am really, really excited about that.
Seconds from, or Amy, so one of us has signed a contract. You signed a contract already?
In hand, I have to finish reviewing.
Yeah, so yes, one of us is signing a contract, but we have, we have secured two positions pending the contract sign.
Yeah.
Because we had secured funding in one of four ways, but you don't have to decide until May.
And, and the two-to-one is definitely found a way to make that happen, which I'm thrilled about and lets us do our ordering and, and not have to worry about supply chain and we can, we can kick that off with new thank you, because I do agree that that's an essential part of our learning environment. Um, and so really it's just waiting on enrollment numbers to see whether we have instructional coach or use that as a classroom teacher and which way we have to use that particular position.
And I, um, I am not sure after all this process. I don't think an instructional coach is possible because we may not pull the position until August. You know what I mean?
Okay.
And so, and I can't give a contract to it and, and I can't give someone, say, you're going to be an instructional coach who wants it, and then August say you're not. That's not fair to the staff member who has to make a decision about their professional goals and their professional experience.
The most likely that will be a classroom teacher. And then we'll see whether or not we need additional teacher for this other end of enrollment. That's where we're at.
I, the instructional coach will probably be in enrollment.
Okay, thanks.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it does. I, I'm just checking my understanding.
Nope.
And, and I'm, I'm echoing Victoria's sentiment that thank you for listening to us about what we as a board really considered priorities and finding a way to work together and make those happen. So thank you.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, to point out, because I know sometimes folks think, well, you, you know, you figured out how to do it. But there were some, some hard decisions made. We had, um, a, a nurse position that we're only funding half. Um, we, uh, we are proposing one less teacher, whichever teacher it is, one less para. Um, we cut some professional development. We don't have the new custodian. Um, so there, there were, um, there were significant savings. We cut our, our transportation to 15 buses. So, uh, you know, and then there are other things that we, um, we were able to realize by, you know, potentially some insurance selection savings and, and whatnot. And, and some smart hiring, which is, we should be doing that anyway. But, um, but we, we will be able to realize some savings in those areas. So. Right, I think it's.
Yeah.
To note that there were sacrifices.
Yep.
And you'll be able to outline those for us. And, and it would be possible to have that before the meeting so we can review that coming into the meeting in terms of what that proposal is going to be?
It's already done.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So June, um, we'll have a vote for recommended default and I expect we'll have more knowledge about it.
Okay.
Cool beans?
Yep.
Get one over there.
Just have a question. Um, so Amy, thank you, because my question was going to be, how did we find the money? So that's helpful. Um, the, uh, I lost my question. Where did it go? Sorry. Um, on the fellows and the options that we'll be discussing further, I just want to understand. So they will be working with special ed or were they brought, I, I, I'm, wasn't here for some of those earlier conversations? So I'm going to pull the new member card, but I thought there was a literacy focus with, with those fellows.
It is. Um, they were working in a small group, but because of the potential, so they are trained to be, and trained to become a special education teacher. So they'll be working with small groups and they'll be working in classrooms and there may be some opportunities for them to work in a numeracy as well.
Okay.
But it is everything for me right now. I think we're going to get to it tonight, but it, we'll talk more about, um, literacy. But in full transparency, we've moved it to, uh, almost 100% specialized, so it's valuable for the trust, but it's still working with our kids in literacy and numeracy.
Okay. Looking at enrollment, are there any other grades across the district that we're concerned about? I heard Amy say that we're, you know, sacrificing a teaching position, one less para. Um, kindergarten and first are obviously a problem, but do we have any other grades where we're not going to hit our target, our class size targets?
I, I look at it and we'll make sure, review it for the next one, but I'll, I'll be honest, all my focus is my kindergarten coach. But we'll, we'll dig in for, for the June, make sure.
Yeah, that would be helpful, because.
I, I apologize. I've only looked at K1.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that question.
So I'm going to alter the agenda here tonight. So in the interest of time, uh, we're going to skip over the district assessment. Uh, Steve had some notes and the board notes there that are obviously available publicly as well, just about some additional metrics and some ideas that we're, we're talking about. So we'll be able to address those more, uh, in our next meeting. And we'll also be able to do board goals as well. We haven't had a chance to really think about this individually. So I think if everybody wants to take some time and, and put together some thoughts on what board goals should be, um, there are some that are suggested that we've uh, looked at in the past. So I think they're good ones for us to continue to work on. So if you want to send me an email individually with what board goals you, you might want to look at for this year, we can discuss that in the next meeting as well, uh, to set those goals and, and really start to plan what we want to do for FY '24. I think a lot of them are going to be, again, pretty similar to what we've done the last couple of years with some of those projects still ongoing. So we'll skip over those two items, uh, and we will go to, uh, starting with stipends, the ones we have to get done tonight. So I will turn it back over to Steve.
Thanks. And this was our goal. So this came up, uh, through an analysis of the collective bargaining agreement. Um, so how the district handles co-curricular, extracurricular, interscholastic, um, stipends is interesting. Um, it is very management-centered. Um, um, there, uh, there is a lot of management, uh, authority over, um, stipends amount. So we are digging in to, to ensure fairness and equity as appropriate through our stipend program. Um, but one thing that was an interesting line in the contract is the, uh, shall. Shall, when you see shall in a contract, that's an important word, because that means you have to. It doesn't say may, it's a shall. And a shall, the board shall grant an increase every year, annually, I think it says. Um, so whether or not you're in consecutive defaults, it is a shall. That's why that language in contract is, is typically not, typically the board may. We like may. We love may. Big fan of may. Not too big fan of shall. Um, so we have to, by contract, increase the stipend. Okay, so this year, um, and, and through Amy's work and our collaboration, um, still providing, um, social opportunities for our students at the elementary school is still important because they are, right, we, they're more social. So we increased this year by 25% our amount for stipends at Clark Wilkins with a very, very successful program. Um, and so we, we have budgeted in, in Clark Wilkins about $40,000 in stipends, which are going to remain even through the fall. At the middle school, we have $80,000 budgeted for interscholastic and $43,000 for co-curricular, extracurricular. So, um, the typically, um, because, and our stipends range from about 850-ish, I'm initial, we like that, but I'm initial, 850, all the way to between three and 4,000, depending on the number of students, number of events, there's a whole piece. So a, a one, I mean, I don't know who's going to watch this tape, um, but my first proposal with leadership team was we're in default 1%. But now 1% on $850 stipend is $8.50. I think it's great, but, um, in further discussions, the recommendation, uh, was to talk with the board. It's always up, it's up to the board. The only thing that we have to do is shall an increase. Like the board could do five, could do two. So a 2% increase felt by the leadership team is an appropriate amount to recognize and to beat the spirit and tone of the contract. Um, so how would this work? So a 2% of Clark Wilkins is $800. It is possible that may reduce by, so we're not increasing the budget by, uh, percent. Now, next year we will. So next year, we will propose in the budget to align with the collective bargaining agreement an appropriate increase. I, I think this came up after we found this shall word a little later than the budget process. So Clark Wilkins, 2% is 800 bucks. So how do you do it? Everybody goes up 16 bucks, so you offer one less stipend. You with me? That's how you do it. You know, um, same thing at the middle school, 120,000, 2% of 120,000 dollars is, um, 240 bucks. So we just adjusted, like 2,400 bucks, we just adjusted. Um, so the board has to, it helps us now, tonight, if the board, um, tell, directs the superintendent, business administrator and our HR to, to increase the stipends via Article 13.7. Whatever amount you decide.
And if it's one or, one or 2%, we're still reducing a position because it's over what we have budgeted in there for now. So.
And, and, and reducing a position for 100% allocation, um, this year we did spend.
Yep.
Uh, but next year, if we get 75% of the interest and there's no material, because we can only do stipends in the elementary school, we have volunteers to do it. Um, and like in, in example, and we're taking a look at this, I want to, Kristin's, um, areas that, that she's going to dive in is to take a look at our stipends for equity. Um, it is, it, I don't believe we use all of our middle schools stipends this year. So it's a cut there without a material impact on youth of America, on the youth. You with me?
Yeah.
So I'm looking for direction from the board. Uh, my recommendation is 2%. It, it would, it's not, it's what it is. It's not two, it's not, it's not three, it's not one, it's two.
So we're not increasing the count?
Yeah, we cannot increase, we're not increasing the count. That's not the gig. We're increasing individual stipends. Cool beans?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, and it, it doesn't necessarily have to be answered now, but it's more of just a process question. So they're, 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 the stipends are managed at the building level, which I understand, that's great. Um, and so then, so if there's, let's say, for example, there's a program that someone's getting a stipend for and you know, it's canceling or it's not running or whatever, like those things get managed a, at that level. And then, so some of the stipends, so for example, at, you know, Clark Wilkins where we have the 40,000, if you don't get enough teachers to, you know, want to run a program, then we still have money in that account at the end of the year. I think it's been a really successful program. From, from what I can see, it seems like a lot of folks are stepping up to take advantage of those opportunities. Yep, okay.
That's more than.
Yep. And. Awesome. And at the middle, and that's great. I fully support spending it. I'm not saying that we should save, but I think it's, it's great that we have it. And then at the middle school, does the 80,000 also include, and I think I read this, it does include like sports, like coaching stipends and things like that.
Because the 80,000, it sounds like sports, right?
Correct. Yeah, and then 40,000 for in-school clubs. So there's.
At AMS?
Correct.
Oh, so they have, they have, okay.
Yeah, so it's budgeted two different ways, which is always, I, so interscholat-, interscholastic sports, right? We have the middle school sports program, they're playing the tricou.
Right.
Coaches, things like that. Now, co-curricular is banned. It's part of school, it's part of the co-curricular, that's the banned stipends. And there's extracurricular, which could be flag football. There's a flag football thing, otherwise. Dunst, so.
Yep.
So that's extra, co is connected academic, interscholastic is a sport. So those are the three kind of definitions.
Okay. And you're reviewing kind of all of that at the middle school right now, is what I just heard you say.
If, yeah, for next year, uh.
Next year.
It's an area that I have interest. Um, equity is important.
Yep.
And I have, I, I met regularly with AE leadership and they are absolutely behind. Because even though we have, management has full, this is where, that contract is management central. We can unilaterally change the stipend. Now, you like to have a reason, or you don't want to be arbitrary and capricious. Um, so we have to look at, there's some equity issues. I'll be honest, there's some equity issues regarding some music positions at one school versus music positions at another. So, um, I, I wouldn't be surprised if, if, um, the next year superintendent says, Steve, why don't you take this on a little bit?
Great, yeah, I appreciate that work and, and look forward to seeing it, but that's not the motion on the table tonight.
Talk about this equity part of this. You don't mean the level set across every stipends, but even to base it off workload, preparation, year-long.
So, um, like you, some, sometimes it's in collective bargaining agreements, it was in my former district. The differentiated pay was based on number of students, number of programs, number of times you meet and also vacation days and weekends. Because if you're, if you work every Saturday for 10, like if you did invention convention, you have five Saturdays. That's different than an after-school program, that means, right? So we're trying to figure it out.
Okay. Uh, so can I get a motion to, uh, I mean, it, does the board, actually, is there a motion on the 2% or a motion on a different percentage that somebody would like to make?
I'll make a motion to increase the individual stipends by 2%.
Okay, give me a second. Terry? Any further discussion on 2%? All right, I'll start a roll call vote with Victoria.
Creasy yes.
White yes.
Gascoigne yes.
Gothier yes.
Beam yes.
All right, staffing update, Steve.
Uh, so, uh, three things tonight under this, uh, agenda item. One is we're going to codify some of the interim indications, the yes, no stuff. Do you remember the yes, no? Where I sent you some stuff and you, yes, because hiring is so quick right now that securing contracts is important. So we're codifying that in a public meeting. And that sheet was available. We're also, I added, uh, we added a shared PE position, a physical education position to that. Um, uh, Steve, Saucier, don't have to worry about it. Went to Springfield, it's all fine. That's all he needs to know.
No, that's it. Done. No more discussion. Thank you. And we also, uh, with regret, we need, uh, would like to have so a motion for the nominations as presented. And then a motion to accept with regret, Kim Ballantyne, first grade teacher, has submitted her resignation. Carolyn Silver, school psychologist, thank you here, has submitted. Uh, Sarah Barrett, PE, physical education, and Deb McGinty, special education, a learning specialist, sorry. So on the, so the, uh, usually it's two different, one for nominations, one for resignations. The nominations as presented and the resignations is just, um, you can say presented as well, like they were presented in board notes. Yes, one, one for resignations and one.
I'll make a motion to accept the nomination slate as presented. Can I get a second?
I will second.
All right, second from Shannon. Uh, Victoria, roll call.
Creasy yes.
White yes.
Gascoigne yes.
Gothier yes.
Beam yes.
And I'll take a motion for those resignations as presented. I'll make a motion, I'll make that motion. Okay, second?
I'll second.
Shannon? And.
With regret?
With regret, of course, is the, uh, the motion. Danae, if we can add that on there. Um, what happens if we don't accept the resignation?
They gotta stay, sorry.
They'll just not show up.
Plenty of chance, a chance to thank them and.
No, I, I, I.
You don't have to do this. It's unindentured servitude.
Yes, all right. So, uh, with that, I'll do a roll call vote.
Oh, we.
Or if, if you want to discuss.
Well, yeah, so I would thank the, those four staff members, um, and teachers and educators for their, for their time and everything they brought to our district. Um, I know that, you know, some of them were here longer than others and I can't even encompass all of that in, in one, um, statement tonight, but we are grateful, um, to, to those folks.
I know there are a lot of disappointed.
They left on the district.
A lot of disappointed moms in first grade, uh, this weekend that I heard from. So, uh, with Ms. Ballantyne's resignation, so.
And that's why, thank you. You just put chills up my spine. Thank you. But that's why we do it, to give you an opportunity to share and thank them for their work in this community, um, because they've made a difference. So thank you.
All right, roll call vote starting with Victoria.
Creasy yes.
White yes.
Gascoigne yes.
Gothier yes.
Beam yes.
All right, so by my count, our last agenda item tonight, uh, is just a, is it an acceptance or is this just a first read for us and we'll accept them at the next meeting? Because we already reviewed them at the SAU meeting.
Do them all at once. Some boards have done a first reading and accepted.
All right, so I'd say let's, uh, I'll take a motion for a, uh, to accept the policies as presented tonight by the policy committee. They are policies GBED, which, uh, regards the prohibition of tobacco products, e-cigarettes and e-liquids in and on school facilities and grounds. GCEB, which is administrative staff recruiting, and then GCF, which is professional staff hiring.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Jason. Can I get a second for Ms. Gascoigne?
I will second.
We have one time tonight where Danae's out of order right now, so. Uh, any discussion on those policies? Anything you'd like to add, Victoria?
No, I don't have anything to add to these.
All right, so we'll take a roll call vote, starting with you then, Victoria.
Creasy yes.
White yes.
Gascoigne yes.
Gothier yes.
Beam yes.
All right, so that takes us to our second public comment tonight. Uh, John, if you'd like to come to the microphone, you can feel free to hop that desk or maybe Kristin will be kind enough to. We got a, hold on, John, wait for the microphone, nobody, so we can get you. Wait, wait for the microphone. There you go. Say your name and your town of residence.
My name is John Balgett and I live at One Windsor Drive in Amos, New Hampshire.
All you, you have three minutes.
My first one is impact taxes. Who's, where's the money coming from? The town?
Shannon, if you'd like to.
Oh yeah, those are the, those are the fees collected from developers. So the town is collecting them when a developer builds a new, you know, home. It's the impact to the town of the development. So it's not a tax. It's, it's not, yeah, it's a surcharge to the developer and it's not any tax impact to the resident. And if we don't utilize them within six years, it goes back to the.
Find out that some of the money's going to go to the school, they will oppose it. They know it. That's all I'm saying. Number two, and I've discussed this. And I've discussed this with Steve. I do not see a person at the corner of Cross and Windsor Drive. Traffic warden. Traffic. Used to be person there and it's gone.
Cross and Windsor.
Cross and Windsor.
I'll look into it. I don't remember talking about you, I apologize. Must've been busy that day.
My third question is this. When I look at the sixth and seventh grade going to the annex. Don't you think that's gonna be a manageable problem? Because you're gonna have union on one side and non-union teachers on the other. Especially you're gonna have intermix of the children going to the cafeteria or the gym. I think you need to review that, how you're gonna handle that. That's gonna be a management problem.
I can assure you, that was one of many topics we talked about.
Oh, it's, it's a tough one, buddy.
I, I.
Cause you have different philosophies too.
You're, you're preaching to the choir on this one.
Okay, there's my three minutes.
Nothing online, uh, nothing else here in person, so with that, we will close the public hearing. Any non-public tonight?
I don't have one unless you do.
I do not have one. So, without objection, I, actually, you know what? I'll do it the right way tonight. I'll take a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to.
Adjourn, excuse me, not to close. Second.
I will second that motion.
And Ms. Preesi, with a roll call vote.
Preesi, yes.
White, yes.
Gascoigne, yes.
Gothier, yes.
Beam, yes.
And we adjourned at eight fifty-two. Thank you, everybody. We will see you in June.